Good evening, everyone. I opened the Ordinary Council meeting on the 26th of November 2024 at 7pm. Could I please call on councillor Asgari to read the acknowledgement of country?
I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Bajiko and Gaddigal peoples, who occupy the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of the Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respect to the elders, past and present, and to Aboriginal people in attendance today.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza to read the prayer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of the city of Randwick and Australia. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. I call for apologies and leaves of absence, but we're a full house. So I will go straight to the next item, which we have the confirmation of minutes. Can I have someone please confirm the minutes of the Ordinary Council meeting on the 22nd of October 2024? Councillor Rosenfeld, second to councillor D'Souza. All those in favour? Those against, declare that carried. Can I have someone please move the minutes of the extraordinary meeting on the 29th? Move councillor D'Souza, second to councillor Wilson. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Councillors, are there any declarations of pecuniary or non-pecuniary interests? Councillor Magna.
Mr Mayor, I rise to declare a pecuniary interest in relation to an upcoming motion for the nurses' public wage claim. I am employed by the New South Wales Nurses and Advice Association as an advocate, an employment lawyer, and my salary is directly linked to the outcomes, and we hope, successful outcomes of our industrial campaigns. And this therefore raises a pecuniary financial interest. And I'll absent myself at that point in time that the motion is discussed.
Thank you. Are there any further declarations, councillor Hay?
For the same motion, notice of motion 86, my wife is a registered nurse. I will declare a pecuniary interest and I will not vote in or participate in that matter. She's recently started working on a business that is on Robber Road. The business, she's not a director of the business, it won't be material affected. So that's non-pecuniary, non-significant, and I will be voting and participating in that matter.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further declarations? I have a declaration in relation to CS54/24 Coogee Beach Amenities Kiosk and Bus Shelter. It is a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest. My former roommate's brother-in-law is the current lessee. My former roommate's brother-in-law is the current lessee of the Coogee kiosk. I no longer reside with this individual, that is the first one. The second is that a close personal friend of mine is a former employee of Sam Crawford Architects, which has been involved in the design. He is no longer employed with that architecture firm. As a result of the former nature of these relationships, I will be voting. There being no further declarations, councillor Magna, if you could turn yours off? Thank you. I now will read the chairperson's announcement. In respect to the Privacy and Personal Information Protection Act, members of the public are advised that proceedings of the meeting will be recorded for the purposes of clause 520 to 523 of council's code of meeting practice. Audio/video recordings of meetings are prohibited without the express permission of council. A person may be expelled from a meeting for using or having used an audio/video recorder without the express authority of council prior. Now, we move to the announcement of speakers. All members of tonight's meeting who are addressing us this evening will have a maximum of four minutes in order to put forward their case, with no extensions available. Presenters will be stopped when the four minutes has expired. Councillors do however have the opportunity to ask the presenters at the end of each public address questions. However, I would like to really emphasise for members of the public that you are under no obligation whatsoever to answer questions if you do not feel the need to do so. So please do not feel like you're under any pressure whatsoever. I'll now go to a content warning. The following presentations may contain information that could potentially be confronting or disturbing with words or images at times being able to cause distress or trigger traumatic memories for people particularly survivors of past abuse violence or childhood trauma. For some people, these responses can be overwhelming. If you need to talk to somebody, there is support which is available. Okay. That is not in reference to any of the particular items. That is a general declaration, by the way. Okay, we now move to the first item for which we have speakers. CP51/24 Outcome of the Heritage Review of One Maud Street, Randwick. Speaking in favour of the recommendation on the business paper, Mr Anthony Boskowitz, representing the applicant.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, councillors. I appreciate your time tonight. Firstly, I thank and commend the council for the pragmatic approach that they took to this matter in allowing for a deferral to allow for a more and greater consideration of the potential heritage of One Maud Street at the last council meeting. Subsequent to that meeting, the applicant undertook a and partook in communications with the council to facilitate access to the site, which was undertaken by JML Heritage on behalf of the council. That JML report concluded that there wasn't any reason to list this property at One Maud Street. They went through the appropriate steps for an assessment under the 2023 guideline to assess whether any one of the seven criteria were met. And that resulted in a recommendation to council that there wasn't any heritage fabric and this matter shouldn't be listed. On that basis, we support the recommendation, which is to note the report and which says it doesn't reach the threshold for heritage listing, to not proceed with the preparation of a planning proposal. And we commend that. We would ask for one further recommendation to be added to those recommendations, and that reflects or relates to the interim heritage order. And that is that the coordinator strategic planning take all necessary steps to revoke the interim heritage order number nine dated to October 2024 by 3 December 2024. The interim heritage order is put in place to allow for investigations to be undertaken to consider whether heritage ought be sought on the property and to ensure the protection of that property during that process. That process has been taken, as I said, comprehensively and cooperatively between the applicant and the council. And obviously, as a result of that recommendation by JML, which is obviously also supported by heritage experts, Mr Kovacs and Wee Phillips. We would say that the IHO has no further work to do. On that basis, we think that it should be revoked and can be revoked pursuant to section 29 of the Heritage Act 1977. The purpose of the revocation is quite simple. One, the IHO sitting in situ for another four months might affect work undertaken by our client and the council with respect to the ongoing DA, which is the subject of an appeal. I won't go any further into that, except to say that one of the parts of that application is for the demolition of One Maud Street for the purpose of construction of that 86-room co-living development. The other reason is that we do have IHO proceedings on foot seeking for the revocation of same. Obviously, it would be best for all parties involved that that be discontinued. So if the IHO is revoked, it would instantly clearly need to be discontinued. So we would ask that just that extra flow-on condition would be added to the recommendation as we see it to flow on to not listing this property in the first place. So I thank the councils, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to fill them.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? I will take a declaration now, councillor Heach. Is it in relation to this matter?
It is in relation to this matter. I did know the former owner of this property, so I'll declare a non-significant, non-pecuniary interest. Wasn't a close personal relationship as a resident, but I will declare it, but I will be voting.
Thank you. Are there any further questions on this matter? There being no further questions, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
We now move to the next item, CS54/24 Coogee Beach Amenities Kiosk and Bus Shelter Project. Outcomes of Stage Two of Community Consultation, speaking against Mr Mark England. Mr England.
Thank you, councillors and Randwick council managers and members of the public. I wish to acknowledge the elders past, present and emerging. I'm speaking on behalf of the Coogee Bay precinct in support of the upgrade option for the amenities in Goldstein Reserve on the Coogee foreshore. The proposed design of the new build is totally out of place in the Coogee foreshore, which is known for its heritage, its natural beauty and its low-key look and feel. Coogee is the oldest proclaimed seaside village in the colony and commemorates its bison tenery soon, 21 years before Randwick. Heritage imbues Coogee and its beloved foreshore. The Coogee foreshore is loved by those who visit and those who make Coogee their home. Ask anyone and you'll hear the words 'village atmosphere, heritage and the low-key look and feel'. The present amenities block was designed in a style reminiscent of the tram shed it replaced, which was built in 1913. The Coogee Beach and Foreshore Plan of Management states that the present amenities block provides a memory of the historic development of the area. There is no such memory in the new build design. The report before you refers to the new building design being inspired by the Coogee coastline with a curved concrete roof connecting the building's three sections. And that blends with the surrounding environment and maximises its orientation towards the park and the beach. The proposed concrete roof, when looked at from the street, is just a flat slab of concrete, which appears from the montage to be about half a metre thick. The heavy-handed design of this slab could not have been inspired by the Coogee coastline and certainly not by the gentle and restful curve of the beautiful bay. Contrary to the report's assertion, the new design is no more orientated to the park and beach than the present building. Furthermore, concrete and glass have no relationship with the surrounds. The new design makes no attempt to provide a memory of Coogee's history and so does not comply with the plan of management. The recommendation for approval for the new build should be rejected on this basis alone. The sole reason given in the report for recommending support for the new build is that it had higher support in the community responses than the upgrade. However, the new build option has two popular inclusions: additional kiosk seating and a communal wash basin. We move to the table here, and we can see on this table the comparative listing that's taken from your report on page 92. Therefore, comparing responses overall attempts to compare apples with oranges and is not valid methodologically. If you look at the table, we'll see that both approaches have a failure, which is under 50%. It's 40% for the kiosk, for the refurbishment, and we have a 46% for storage for the new building. So we have problems with those two areas and they're the ones that we need to focus on. These inclusions should not have formed part of the upgrade, but they did. In terms of two key concerns, the number of toilet seats and the bus stop seating, the community response supported the upgrade option, not the new build. More responses oppose the new build than the upgrade. So in conclusion, the case has not been made for the new build. And on the very issues that need to be addressed, the survey supports the upgrade option. The Coogee Bay precinct urges councillors to proceed with the upgrade and consider including additional seating for the kiosks, communal wash basins and a storage additional toilet facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr England? There being no questions of Mr England, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now move to CS55/24 Burrows Park Master Plan Concept. Speaking for Ms Leanne Warner, representing the Friends of Burrows Park.
Good evening and hello. My name is Leanne Warner. I'm representing this evening a group called the Friends of Burrows Park. And some of you will know of us. For those who are unaware of who Friends of Burrows Park are, we are a group of over 100 community members who are very dedicated to preserving the beauty that is Burrows Park, and they are very interested recreational park users. We're here tonight just to let you know that Friends of Burrows Park are very supportive of the adoption of option C for two reasons. The first being because it does propose modernising the amenities building to meet the needs of the community in terms of mixed gender children's sporting groups and also general recreational uses of the park. And also, secondly, it proposes extending the ground and enhancing the condition of the ground in such a way that it does not involve major earthworks, and it is respectful of the remnant bushland and the wildlife that inhabit it. We'd really like to take the opportunity to acknowledge and thank the council staff for attending meetings and for considering the feedback from a range of different stakeholder groups, including residents, recreational users of the park and the children's sporting clubs, who we have had fed back to us are also in favour of option C as the best solution for Burrows Park. Continuing this collaborative approach with Friends of Burrows Park in December and January of this year, in preparation for the community consultation, which I believe is scheduled for February 2025, would enable council to ensure that the most beneficial process is undertaken and these are the right questions that can be put to community. We appreciate council's recognition that the previous process was inadequate and that most of the feedback was actually captured using free text fields, which actually created a lot of work for respondents and also for those who were collating that data. We would be very happy to provide input on the issues we know are currently of concern to the community, such as lighting, access and walkways, operating hours, the quality of the planting and green space, among other things. We understand that there is at this point no plan to alter the purpose of the dog park and that it will be retained as an off-leash dog park. We also believe that some budget has been allocated for the park's surface to be levelled and enhanced to keep it safe and an enjoyable space for public recreational use. We are very pleased to hear this. We acknowledge that access to Burrows Park for services and vehicles will continue to be across the dog park, and we would like to know if at this point there is any plan to light the dog park, either all night or for scheduled hours at some point during the planning. Friends of Burrows Park would have concerns about this because of the impact that this could have on native wildlife and also on residents. Overall, the community that I represent is in favour in principle of option C and welcomes ongoing consultation and input to support council in implementing the changes in the most effective and efficient way. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? Councillor Magna.
Leanne Warner, Ms Warner, thank you for your advocacy. Quick question, are you in favour of the staged approach that's proposed for the development specifically? And have you considered the benefits of doing it all in one go?
Yeah, we have had a discussion about this. As I said, our group is over 100 strong. We have an active working committee that meets, we have been meeting fortnightly. I think we might move it to monthly if option C gets a gig. But we did discuss that. I think, as I understand it, it's a financial consideration that the two stages are being proposed. And the amenities block, as I understand it, for recreational park users and also for sporting clubs, the amenities block is probably the priority. So that is what we would understand to be the first priority, and therefore that would be in 2027. If it could all be done at once, then fundamentally, at least, all of the noise works and, you know, things that will be cordoned off, I imagine, could be restricted and reduced. We would do it all in one go and it would be done. So yeah, if there were magic funds to enable that, that would be fantastic. But if it isn't possible, we're happy for the staged approach to happen. Yeah, thanks.
Councillor Magna, any further questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to the next public speaker in M8724. Notice of motion from councillor Heach safeguarding native vegetation and bushland sites in the Randwick local government area. Speaking for Ms Kerry Gordon. Did I? My apologies. We will go to this item, Ms Gordon, you're up, and then we will return. My apologies. Thank you. Thank you councillor Sed for raising that.
Thank you for your time. If I could move to the first slide, thank you. Volunteers have been working on this site at Bay Parade, Malabar for more than 30 years, and I was actually one of the first people in that group. It's a very small site. It slopes down towards the water and it's an important habitat corridor. We have been doing low-level planting of native species from the council nursery in that time. And if I could have the next slide, please? What we've been aiming for is some fairly dense planting in order to inhibit the weeds. And I would note that it is not a bushfire-prone area according to the council's own assessment. So those slides just give you a bit of an idea of what it looked like. Can I have the next slide, please? Oh, sorry. So after the pruning, which happened just before the council election, there was no consultation, no notification. There's been no acknowledgement of the work of the volunteers on this space. Counsel came in, cut it down, and we were expected to turn up as usual on our volunteer day. And frankly, we were devastated. It was quite a shock and obviously no recognition as any kind of stakeholder despite the amount of time and effort we had put into that area. Weed control is now much harder because of the opened-up spaces. The contractors who did the job have left the cut bushes across the remaining vegetation, and we've been trying to remove that. But the birds really need this habitat. We did this right in the middle of breeding season, just before the election. And your own plan of management says that success of that plan of management will be measured by having small birds in the area. So you can't go down cutting down the trees just before they're about to breed. So this gives you a bit of an idea of what it looks like now. It's pretty devastating. It's open. The one remaining tree has subsequently died. We don't know whether that's been poisoned or not. And if I could have that last slide, please? My husband took this photograph last weekend. My husband took this photograph last weekend. It's really good to know that we have actually got wildlife who uses this as a habitat. On the other hand, it's pretty concerning that these animals are now much more open. So it's, you know, having an impact. We really need a new plan of management. The plan of management written in nineteen ninety-four is out of date, doesn't recognise the work of the volunteers. And I would say councillors can't turn up to our events and say we're doing a great job and then come in and chop it down. That's not on. It's not acceptable. So I urge you to support this motion, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? Councillor Veach.
Thank you very much for coming in, and especially thank you and to all the other volunteers for your work there. Thirty more, thirty or more years is a really incredible commitment. And I, and no doubt other councillors, received a number of emails from yourself and from other bush care volunteers from that site about what had happened. Obviously, we're requesting a review of the plan of management, but what could be done better? Like, what would you suggest in terms of the best way to consult and to, you know, ensure that this doesn't happen again?
Well, having the plan of management will be the key thing, and there'll be a consultation process in the development of that plan. I think actually consulting people who work on the ground. I mean, we could have done, could have helped to have done that pruning in a much more sympathetic way if we had been told that that was what was going to happen. But the shock of turning up to site and having it cut down without any notice was pretty devastating. So actually knowing, you know, being told in advance would be incredibly helpful. Obviously, the personnel of the group changes from time to time, but there's a pretty strong core group who turn up week after week, month after month, people that I've been working with side by side for more than two decades. You know, there are people who actually spend their time looking after this little fragment of bush, and they should be considered as stakeholders.
I saw councillor D'Souza, then I've got councillor Hay.
Thank you, Ms Gordon. Thank you for volunteering and doing what you do so well. I too was saddened by what I saw and what I heard, and the precinct committees were quite upset in the Bayside region, Beaches, I should say, Laffruse and Beaches precinct. But my question is, what communications channels exist between your group and the council? Do they exist at all?
Well, we have bush care coordinators who meet with the group three times a week, every week. I mean, there is a direct channel. All we need to do, there's a mailing list. Bush care news comes out every week. There are numerous channels to contact the volunteers, numerous channels.
Your biggest concern, your biggest complaint is that council didn't communicate with you and your group about what was going to occur. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Hay.
If I could ask Mr Kelly to go back to the presentation and go back to the post-pruning slide. You mentioned that you would prefer a more sympathetic stage of pruning. What would that area look like if it was more sympathetic? I'm trying to get a visual idea of what you have in mind.
Okay, so it's been taken down to one metre from the grassed area. That seems unnecessarily harsh. It was perfectly possible to do a sympathetic pruning of some of the acacias in the area that have self-seeded without going through and levelling things that we have planted. So a judicious pruning would have achieved a better outcome. I mean, I'm very aware that the issue around residents protecting their views versus bush care is an issue. But you can see from the slides that I put up, the view is still there.
Right, so is this, so which of these do you approve of these three images?
This is the post-pruning. This is what I'm trying to say. It's in areas up to the path. It's been levelled.
Right.
That is not acceptable.
Thank you. Are there any further questions of the speaker? There being no further questions, thank you very much. We now return to NM eighty-six twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Veach, support for nurses and midwives. Speaking for Ms Charlie Hurst. Thank you.
Good evening, councillors, and thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Charlie Hurst, and I'm a registered nurse at the Sydney Children's Hospital in the Kids' Cancer Centre. I'm here to speak to you today to ask for your support in the Nurses and Midwives campaign for a fifteen percent pay rise. At its heart, our campaign for increased wages is about fairness. Nurses are highly valued within the community, but our salary does not reflect this. We are paid significantly less than other public sector workers such as teachers and police. And most significantly, nurses in New South Wales are the lowest paid in the entire country. Yet we live in a state with the highest housing and transport costs. If I moved to Queensland, I'd earn at least ten thousand dollars more a year for the exact same work. But I stay. I stay because my life is here and I care deeply about the community I grew up in and the kids and families that I care for. But I also care about wage fairness. The New South Wales Government's recent decision to give police a historic pay rise more than double what has been offered to nurses speaks volumes. New South Wales Police are now the best paid in the country, with wages increasing by twenty to forty percent over four years. Meanwhile, nurses and midwives have been told to accept ten point five percent. Over three years, ten point five percent does not keep up with inflation, effectively leaving nurses no better off in real terms. It is also difficult not to conclude that there is an element of gender discrimination at play here. A fifteen percent pay rise would address this systemic inequity and send a strong message about the value of women's work. The wage gap isn't just unfair to nurses. It perpetuates broader societal inequality. By closing this gap, we acknowledge the critical contributions nurses make to healthcare and the economy. Nurses and midwives are one of the largest female-dominated workforce in the state, and the gender pay gap between our professional workforce and other public sector workers is stark. I work with children battling cancer. The job is incredibly rewarded but also emotionally devastating. I work hard as part of a team to implement a treatment plan to minimise kids' pain where possible and provide genuine care and support to the whole family. The work is a constant balancing act of delivering lifesaving care, managing the workload and stress, and trying to preserve my own wellbeing along the way. Like my nurse colleagues, I grow to love the children and their families that I work with. This is why nursing takes such a huge toll. It is devastating to see that a child has relapsed or passed away, but that is a daily reality of my work. I often feel burnt out and tired, and this feeling is compounded by the knowledge that my empathy and dedication to the nursing profession is being exploited because I'm not compensated fairly for what I do. I've seen many of my colleagues leave the profession entirely or move to other states where conditions and pay are more reasonable. I'm perhaps lucky that I still live with my parents, but this is out of financial necessity rather than choice. In the last four years alone, rents here in Randwick have increased by more than thirty percent. New South Wales is hemorrhaging nurses and midwives to neighbouring states where pay and working conditions are significantly better. A competitive pay rise is essential to retain skilled professionals and attract new ones. My message to you today is that, well, it is well and truly time to stop relying on the goodwill and determination of nurses to keep operating under poor conditions. It is not a work perk to have safe nurse-to-patient ratios, and nurses didn't demand improved patient safety standards in exchange for continued wage suppression. Why should nurses and midwives be forced to choose between fair pay and safe staffing levels? Why should we have to risk patient safety just so we can earn a wage comparable to other public sector workers? Safe staffing ratios are not a bargaining chip. They are a matter of public safety and essential to ensuring that we can provide the level of care that every patient deserves. No other workers are expected to accept lower wages as a price for their essential resources, yet this is exactly what the government is asking us to do. Councillors, each one of you here today and your family members will likely need the care of a nurse or midwife during your lifetime. I ask you to stand with us in this fight for fair pay and staffing ratios. I ask you to support this motion and advocate for a fifteen percent pay increase for nurses and midwives. We need fair compensation, not just to survive, but thrive in our roles and continue delivering the high standard of care that every patient deserves. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Rosenfeld.
Thanks for coming in. Just wanted to clarify, is that fifteen percent in one year that you're after?
I believe it's a fifteen percent back bay to July twenty-twenty-four this year.
This year, but for a one, like a fifteen percent increase for a one-year period?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
councillor Veach.
Thank you very much for that very heartfelt speech. It really brought home the reality of what you are all dealing with in your profession at the moment. So thank you for sharing that with us and thank you for your work. You outlined many, many issues, but what do you think the sort of fundamental risks are to the staff, to the patients, and to our community if you don't receive this much-needed wage increase?
Yeah, of course. I think the main issue that we're looking at right now is we're just going to not be able to retain our workforce here in New South Wales. Nurses are going to leave to bordering states for better pay, and then we're going to see unsafe staffing, overworked nurses, unfair overtime, and more burnout.
Thank you. Are there any further questions of the speaker? councillor Hurst.
How long have you been in the nurse role?
About, just coming up on four years.
And there was also, what sort of training you did before that?
Yes, so I went to university for three years, did my bachelor's there. I completed my postgraduate this year while also working full-time, and I worked as an undergraduate assistant in nursing through university, and then did my graduate year, and then have worked for the next two years post-op at the Children's Hospital.
Wow, very well credentialed, so we should be giving you a lot more money.
Thank you councillor D'Souza.
Thank you. Thank you for what you and your colleagues do to save lives and all you do to make our quality of life better. Now, just tell me something, with the nurses-to-patient ratios, what is it at the moment? Is it four to one?
We haven't effectively seen patient ratios rolled out in our hospitals yet.
So that's something the government was talking about?
It was talking about, and it's what we were told would be implemented, but it hasn't effectively been implemented in hospitals around the state yet.
Okay. That's all right. It was, I think, pre-election sort of promise to address your concerns. So that hasn't been addressed, so that is something that you all will... Are you still pursuing that, or is that an accepted, that this ratio is going to be implemented?
I guess we're always still pursuing safe because it's at the benefit of patient safety, so we're always going to be looking out for what's best for our patients and what's safest in healthcare.
Thank you. Thank you again for what you and your team do to save our lives.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers? Thank you very much. In M ninety-two slash twenty-four, notice of motion from councillor Wellington, responsible investments within Randwick City Council's investment policy. Speaking for Dr Don Munro. Dr Munro.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Don Munro. I live at Beet Street, Coogee. I have a PhD in economics. I've worked in local government for a number of years before I moved to the state government, where I worked for thirty years mostly in economic development and in corporate governance, hence my interest in the council's investment policy. Council's current investment policy is very risky because it focuses on financial returns. It opens council up to problems such as the James Hardy Company. A lot of people invested in James Hardy because it had a strong financial return, until it got sued for millions of dollars because of asbestos products. It's the same with investments in tobacco companies. If you look at them in financial terms, as council's policy states at the moment, tobacco companies may generate good financial returns, but they are also damaging children's health, creating waste and pollution and so on. So it's very important for council's investment policy to go beyond just looking at financial returns and instead to also look at broader factors that are important for prudent investment. In the next few minutes, I'd like to briefly cover what is ESG and how it will deliver better results for council. I should add, I have absolutely no connection to any investment companies, and I have no conflicts of interest in this area. First, what is ESG? ESG investment means looking at council's investments in terms of four factors, financial returns, of course, but also looking at the investments in terms of their environmental, social, governance performance. It's not just financial criteria. Why bother doing this? There are three main reasons. First is that numerous studies have shown that ESG funds perform as well as or better than non-ESG funds. Fiduciant Advisors, Harvard Business School, many, many other organisations have shown over the past ten years, the share market, as you'd expect, moves in cycles. But investments in ESG portfolios almost always outperforms non-ESG investments. That's in the private sector. In the public sector, you've got T-Corp, which is the central borrowing and investment authority for the New South Wales Government, and it's a top-ten Australian investment manager in its own right. It's been using ESG principles since two thousand and sixteen. The second reason why it's important to add ESG criteria to council's investment policy is because this will give you and council staff insights into how risky those investments are. The Office of Local Government Requirements on Council for Its Financial Planning does say councils must assess the risk of its investments. However, the OLG does not say how to do that risk assessment. By looking at ESG factors, this will help council identify potential risks for council investors because ESG allows you to look at future risks and not just looking at past financial returns. The third reason why ESG investments are important is because I suspect no ratepayer in Randwick wants council to invest in portfolios that might damage the health of children, create waste, pollute the oceans with plastic and so on. So in conclusion, council's current investment policy is very risky because of its primary focus on financial returns. If council's investment policy is rewritten to include ESG risks and opportunities, this is more likely to result in better financial performance and a better quality of life for the people in the LGA. I recommend that council adopt the proposal.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? There's a question from councillor Hay.
Dr Munro, if you look at, I appreciate you may not have a copy in front of you, but from page fifty-two of the business paper, you can see what our, we have on corp bonds, term deposits, flirting rates, notes, fixed bonds, and these are all rated A or higher, and that's our current investment policy. We're not investing in James Hardy. We're not investing in tobacco companies releasing it directly. And the reason why our current system, we invest with those people, is because they are the low-risk A or higher. If you, page fifty-seven.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Councillor Hay, I'm just conscious that the speaker doesn't have the business paper in front of him. They're more than welcome to answer any questions if they like, but I just like, for fairness to the speaker, just to be conscious of.
Yep.
So it says here, the banks, if we go to the next page, it says the banks with little, the banks with little to no exposure to fossil fuels are lower-rated institutions, and our current policy does not permit investment in triple B minus-related institutions. Triple B or perhaps lower. So what you're effectively doing, if we were to move, we'd be moving away from A, double A, and triple A credit institutions and moving to B-rated institutions. How is that, how do you justify that and say that we're moving to a lower risk when the standard ratings say that we are moving to a higher risk?
That's a very reasonable comment, and there's two answers. The first answer is about the triple A rating. People may remember there was the global financial crisis. Local government, this was in the USA and other countries, invested in triple A-rated investments, housing-backed investments. The investors called them junk bonds because the governance of those investments were impossible to find out. So that's a very good example where if you just look at triple A rating as measured in financial terms, you're setting yourselves up for failure. It's very risky. It's much better to look at the... It's much better to look at the financial factors as well as the ESG factors. The second comment I'd make is, you're talking as if council is investing in triple A-rated investments and the only other option is therefore to go down. That's not so. What good practice is in the public sector is there are many different types of triple A-rating portfolios out there. So the idea is to check your current triple A-rated portfolio in terms of, does it fit with those ESG criteria? And if they don't, then move to another triple A-rated portfolio. It's not one or the other.
Thank you. Are there any further questions of the speaker? Councillor Magna.
Dr Munro, thanks for your advocacy and for your presentation to the council. You've spoken about how this is mitigating risk in terms of future environmental, social or governance shocks. Can you explain, or how would you answer those people that have a concern that this represents a risky radical strategy? And can you do so by perhaps highlighting other organisations that you're aware of that already take the approach that's being proposed by the motion tonight?
Sure. It's basically not risky. This is now core business in the public sector and in the private sector. There are tens of thousands of companies, major Fortune five hundred companies across the world. This is just core business. So, and they're doing it in the private sector because it works. You get better performance, you get better transparency and so on. In the public sector, the agency owner best is T-Corp. It's one of, it's in the top ten of Australia's investment. As I say, they've been doing this for nearly a decade. And T-Corp is, if you like, the gold standard of public sector investment. If they're doing it, I think council has, it's not a risky thing at all anymore. This is just everyday, common, good management practice. And I would hope that council would take its current policy, which really is a bit old-fashioned, and bring it up today.
Thank you. Are there any further questions of the speaker? There being no further questions of the speaker. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We now move to NM ninety-five slash twenty-four, notice of motion from councillor Luxford, review of bicycle tracks, speaking against Ms Elsie Edgerton-Till.
Children need to move and we all need to get places. Hi, my name is Elsie Edgerton-Till. I live in West Ward. I work in Kensington, live in Kingsford. This guy goes to childcare just up the road in Randwick. This guy goes to school in Maruba Junction. And we love bike paths. We love biking. And I am against any motion that could take away the amazing bike paths that Randwick Council has put in. In fact, side note, I'd love to see more. I, yeah, I firmly believe that it is a wonderful thing that we can do for a number of reasons. One, anything for bike paths, it's a free mode of transport. So in a cost of living crisis, that makes a huge difference to a family like me, being able to get around quickly in a healthy way around my constant loop in this LGA. I do it so regularly. Also, it's something we can practically do to mitigate the climate crisis, which I feel really strongly about as a parent and a citizen of the world. So I am against any motion that could jeopardise those bike paths, call them into question. I think we need to move forward and build more bike paths. Thank you.
Thank you and very well done to you and your two children of being very well behaved. Are there any questions of the speaker? There being no questions, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Councillors, I'm just conscious that we're a little bit ahead of time. Do you want to continue through the business paper or do you want a short break? I, I. I might continue through for the moment and then we can take a break in a little bit later, if that works. All right, thank you. Councillors, just for the benefit of those who are listening, we're going to run directly down the agenda in relation to it. What I will do is I will give two seconds. It appears that some of the councillors have left the chamber, so maybe what I will do is just to allow them to say goodbye to their guests. We will gather thirty, thirty seconds. While very naughty, but that's okay. All right, what we will now do is we will run down the business paper, beginning with, there being no mer- merrell minutes. Councillors, is there any urgent business? There being no.
Can I just put forward a procedural motion? I have a petition. Usually they come right at the end of the evening and I'd just like to hand it in today. If someone agrees with my procedural motion to hand in this petition, it's about Currie Avenue down at Prince Henry Hospital.
Okay, just before you start, a procedural motion, just to remove the routine of business, move councillor Sid, second to councillor Burst. All those in favour of the procedural motion? All those against? Declare that carried, councillor Sid. Please continue.
Mr Mayor, it's just a petition with over three hundred signatures, virtually of all local residents. There is a plan to remove the bollards of Currie Avenue. A lot of people think this may come to harm with a lot of the elderly that are in the area. And also there's works going on in heritage stakes and to reinforce the commitment to heritage and to peace and quiet in that area. So I just want to hand you over the petition and we'll move on.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll now return to the routine of business. There being no general managers' reports, director of city planning reports, CP forty-nine slash twenty-four, report from fire and rescue. Unchallenged. CP fifty slash twenty-four, variations from development standards under clause four point six to one, October two thirty-one, October twenty twenty-four. Unchallenged. Director of city planning reports, a record of voting is required, so I will request challenges, please. CP fifty-one slash twenty-four, outcomes of a heritage review of one Maud Street, Randwick, challenged by councillor Gordon. Okay, director of city services reports, CS fifty slash twenty-four, investigation of uncontrolled parking of various types of RV, challenged by councillor Sid. CS fifty-one slash twenty-four, challenged by councillor Rosenfeld. CS fifty-two slash twenty-four, challenged by councillor Magna. Thank you. CS fifty-three slash twenty-four, cycleways and bicycle facilities advisory committee. Unchallenged. CS fifty-four. CS fifty-four slash twenty-four, Coogee Beach, Mary's Kiosks and Bus Shelter, project outcomes of stage two, challenged by councillor Wilson. Thank you. Thank you. CS fifty-five slash twenty-four, Boroughs Park Master Plan Concept, challenged by councillor Hamilton. Thank you. Nice and clear. CS fifty-six slash twenty-four, Snake Park Indoor Sporting Facility Concept Design. Challenged by councillor Luxford. CS fifty-seven slash twenty-four, temporary alcohol prohibited areas, twenty twenty-four to twenty-five. Unchallenged. Okay, CC twenty-three, okay, thank you. CC twenty-three slash twenty-four, multicultural event for Randwick, challenged by councillor Rosenfeld. CC twenty-four slash twenty-four, community investment programme, October twenty twenty-four. Unchallenged. CC twenty-five, yep, challenged by councillor Burst. CC twenty-six slash twenty-four, early childhood education care worker, challenged by councillor Veach. CC twenty-seven slash twenty-four, Australia Day celebrations with Surf Lifesaving Clubs Report Back. Challenged by councillor Veach. CO fifty-one slash twenty-four, twenty twenty-four to twenty-five Quarterly Progress Report. Unchallenged. CO fifty-two slash twenty-four, twenty twenty-three to twenty-four Annual Report and twenty-one to twenty-four State of Our City Report. Unchallenged. Okay, yep, councillor Veach has challenged it. I'll just leave it on that. At CO fifty-three slash twenty-four, Code of Conduct Complaint Statistics. Unchallenged. At CO fifty-four slash twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Council Meeting Schedule. Unchallenged. CO fifty-five slash twenty-four, Operating Hours, Christmas and New Year's, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Unchallenged. CO fifty-six slash twenty-four, Council Submission, Councillor Conduct and Meeting Practice, challenged by councillor Veach. Okay, CO fifty-seven slash twenty-four, Councillor Submission, Local Government Remuneration Tribunal. Unchallenged. CO fifty-eight slash twenty-four, Monthly Financial Report, councillor Burst. CO fifty-nine slash twenty-four, Cooley Budget Review. Unchallenged. CO sixty slash twenty-four, Update on the Acquisition of Forty-Nine Cusco Street, South Coogee. Councillor Hamilton. CO sixty-one slash twenty-four, Monthly Investment Report. Unchallenged. Can I please have a mover of the unchallenged items? That's how you do it. Councillor Hamilton, thank you. All those, a seconder? Uh. Seconded, councillor Magna, he called out. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to the first item, CP fifty-one slash twenty-four, outcomes of the heritage review of one Maud Street, Randwick, councillor Gordon.
Hello, Mr Mayor, I would just like to move this motion as amended. I'd like to add additional item C. In accordance with section twenty-nine four of the Heritage Act nineteen seventy-seven, revoke the interim heritage order date one, October twenty twenty-four, applying to one Maud Street, Randwick.
Thank you. Do I have a seconder? I saw councillor Wilson, councillor Wilson is the seconder. Councillor Gordon, would you like to speak to it?
Yes, sure. Mr Mayor, basically, thank you to the council staff for commissioning an additional heritage report into this site, especially including a site inspection. That was one of the requests made at the previous meeting and I'm very pleased that the building owner and the council were able to come to an agreement there. So the interim heritage order basically just gives council the ability to hold off on any, on any works while we assess the, while we assess the heritage values of a property. And now that the assessment, the recommendation from council is that we do not proceed with the listing of it as a heritage item, therefore the interim heritage order has served its purpose and is no longer necessary. So this basically just saves council four months of waiting for it to expire and some court fees, I suppose. So that's why I would like to endorse the amendment to this item. Thank you.
Councillor Wilson is the seconder.
I reserve my right.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, councillor Veach?
As a West Ward councillor who's been familiar with this area since I was elected in twenty seventeen and worked very closely with the residents of Urimbla Avenue, and I'm not sure the councillors who have moved and seconded in this motion know much about that area and I'm not sure really why. They challenged this report in the first place because they, I'm not sure that they know the residents who do live in that area and who previously lived. But Urimbla Avenue, which is just a few doorsteps away really from Maud Street, was entirely obliterated for a good purpose. It was for the new hospital, which the residents understood. But it was done in a pretty terrible way and it devastated those residents. And there's really not much of that area left. When this new housing investigation area, as it's called, goes up, any kind of cultural memory of people who lived there for decades will be completely gone. There won't be anything left. This is really just one little last opportunity to say, we remember you, we respect you, we recognise the histories. Council has voted for a plaque which was requested. The Urimbla Avenue residents who were dispersed, some of them died, actually, since they were all forced to move on. So I feel quite sad that this little house is gone. I personally, I knew the former resident a little bit as a resident. I have visited the house. I'm not sure, again, that the councillors who put forward this amendment know the house, have been there, have been inside. But I'm personally very disappointing, disappointed in this. And I think councillors should vote against this. It's very disrespectful to what was a very old area in Randwick, one of the oldest areas in Randwick. Whether some company has said it's heritage or not, it is heritage. It is part. No matter what anyone says, the house and the residents and the community of that precinct are an integral part of this city. They still, most of them who could tried to stay in our LGA, they will be watching this. And once that other area goes, that area is gone forever. So it would actually be really nice to have one little bit left to respect of those residents who selflessly had to move out of those houses for the benefit of our community, for the hospital. It was done in a really awful way and the people who live, for example, in those other streets have been really badly impacted by living near a massive, massive development. It is a hospital, it is needed, we all use it. But living next to, on the doorstep of a major piece of infrastructure like that is really, really challenging and they had years of construction. And now, you know, it's a major hub with people coming in twenty-four hours a day. So, yeah, please don't support this.
Thank you. Before I go to councillor D'Souza, was it, I must admit, councillor D'Souza?
What kind of people does this former mayor think we are savages? We know what heritage is. We value heritage. But the report is clear. This is not heritage. To say, yes, the surrounding area is protected, that's heritage, that's fine. But let's work on what we know and what is evidence-based. And it says clearly in the report, I don't need to reiterate it, but it says, does not meet the threshold for heritage listing under one or more of the New South Wales Heritage Assessment Criteria. Clearly delineated, clearly defined, turn the page over and it further reinforces what we know. This is not heritage and it should not be treated like heritage. And we should allow the people concerned to move forward. This heritage order should be lifted and progress should occur on this matter.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Gordon, do you wish to reply?
Yes, Mr Mayor, I find it strange that we're now once again debating the heritage value of a property that we deferred last time to take some more time, do our due diligence and look at the area. I find it a little disappointing that the colleagues, some of my colleagues seem to join their federal counterparts in opposing valuable, affordable housing. But all I have to say is that we attempted to do our due diligence. We were evidence-based, as councillor D'Souza said, and I would like to support those who are in favour of an evidence-based heritage process to support this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. It being a planning matter, a record of voting is required, so we'll go straight to a division. All those in favour is the motion as moved? Please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. We have councillor Magna, councillor Hay, councillor Gordon, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Martin, councillor Asgari, councillor, sorry, sorry, my, I was incorrect there, councillor Martin, councillor Wilson, councillor Sid, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. All those against? We have councillor Hamilton, councillor Wellington, councillor Veach, councillor Luxford, councillor Asgari, my apologies. I declare that carried, thank you. We now move to C S fifty one slash twenty four Maruba Road traffic corridor study. Challenged by councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Rosenfeld, could you please outline what it is that you're moving?
Okay, basically I do support, um, the, um. Uh, recommendations except I have a couple of amendments, uh, to them. Um, I, I, I should rephrase that, I do support some of the recommendations. Um, so basically I've sent through my amendments to, uh, uh, to David Kelly. Uh, and what I'm doing is I'm adding, um, the current C becomes D. And in C, I'm, um, I'm basically adding a point to, uh, to completely separate to design. An implosion of the mentioned single lane roundabout. I'm requesting the traffic committee to examine possible measures to ease traffic congestion on Cooper Street. That will result from this, so the, ju- just before you commence, my, my apologies. Yeah.
I skipped an item.
Sure.
By accident, noting that you've commenced moving this item.
Yeah.
We will continue with this item, we will then return back to the other item, my apologies. Please get your seats, yeah, so we've skipped one, so we will continue on Maruba Road.
Yep.
With the indulgence of the meeting.
Yeah.
And then we will return back.
Okay.
Please, please proceed councillor Rosenfeld.
So the reason for this is that I've had some, um, communication with residents and they, um, they basically said to me that they. They're very happy with the outcome, they've been waiting a while for the outcome, but. Um, they're concerned that, uh, there was going to be more traffic going down Cooper Street, so people going basically from east to west. So what they would like us to do is, um, um, yeah, separate to the actual roundabout, um, being installed. Uh, they would like, um, um, traffic committee to look at, um, um, you know. Look at Cooper Street and, 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 um, and, and see if there is an increased traffic flow there and i- if so, um, to, um. Basically look at measures to, to ease, ease that traffic, uh, on Cooper Street, so I'd like that as part of the, uh. Uh, as part of the, um, 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 motion. Uh, the other one I'm looking at is as far as the Maruba Road, Bunnarang Road, Heffron Road intersection, um. I am very happy that the, uh, the slip lane, uh, has been retained as far as Bunnarang Road going south. Uh, however, I don't really see that a, a need for a, a signal, um, a traffic signal, um. Uh, on that slip lane, I know the area quite well, I see it as reasonably, reasonably safe, safe area. Um, and, um, I've spoken to residents in the area and. And they don't, they seem to see that it'll slow the traffic down if, if, if it does so. Uh, but I'd like to say it's great to see that the, uh, this item is, um, is, is, is coming to come, has come back to council. Uh, the fact that we are prioritising Mons Avenue, Cooper Street. Um, a- and, and Mister Mayor, you'll know yourself being from Central Ward, we did get a lot of communication about it in, in Central Ward and. Councillor Gordon will, will know that as well as, uh, as he continues to represent Central Ward, so, uh. Uh, fantastic it's come too, but I ask for support on my amendments.
Thank you, do I have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Haye.
I'll reserve my right.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? There being no further. Yes, councillor Veach, yes.
Can I just ask a question through to the relevant officer about the new point E? So I, I just would like a clarification, is that, um. Yes, are you able to clarify what change this ac- what this actually means? In relation to this report?
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you, through yourself, uh, Mister Mayor, the way, um, I read the, uh, item E on the amendment. Um, is that rather, um, the Transport New South Wales, a proposal to signalise the slip lane. Um, on Bunnarang Road, um, that council through, um, passing this amendment would, would rather retain. Uh, the slip lane than see that particular slip lane signalised.
Councillor Veach.
I'm happy to support A to D, I just feel I'd like more information about E, like perhaps could we get a briefing or a, uh. Another report back or something, cause I feel a bit hesitant to, uh, vote for a major. Change to a big traffic plan. Without understand, you know, being fully across all the details, so I just feel. Wary of voting for that at this point, but I don't know if you would be willing to. Vote through one to D and have the other one as a separate report or something, I don't know.
Through to the mover of the motion.
I was just gonna ask the relevant officer, if, if we were to do that, would we still proceed with A to D? Uh, can we still proceed with the, um, the items in, in A to D? Um, and, and look at, um, Maruba Road, Bunro- Road, Heffron Road as a completely separate item. Down the track, but, but that won't slow down, uh, the design and implementation of the roundabout, uh, that's, that's very much needed.
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you, through yourself, um, Mister Mayor. Oh, I would respond, uh, i- in the regard that each of the intersections had a proposal, nine intersections, um, in the corridor. Uh, plan at, at various stages will come back to council, council had resolved earlier to focus on the river Cooper Mons first. Um, each of the other eight items moving forward will, will at some stage come back to councils to progress design in further detail. Uh, in their own regard.
Okay, well, given that, um, it's got, that's got to come back, um, Bun- Maruba Road, Bunro Road and Heffer Road. Uh, with council approval before we go ahead with it, that particular stage, then, then I don't really have any issue of. Addressing at that time and, and yeah, if we can, I'd like love a briefing on it because, um, yeah, so.
Can I just confirm, a- are you removing E?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to remove E, yeah.
Okay, I was in a request, I was just confirming it, yeah. All right, thank you, so just for the benefit of the meeting, point E has been removed.
Yep.
Uh. Councillor Burst, I believe you had your hand up?
Um, yeah, I was actually about to speak about point E, but it's been removed now, but. We've got to be careful of un- unexpected consequences, as, as a regular road user and I spend most of my time on the road. Um, those slipways, uh, by, uh, signalising those slipways, you will get backlog traffic guaranteed. Because, uh, Transport New South Wales don't do it that well. And a lot of our intersections, and I see it day in, day out, week in, week out. Uh, you, you, um, if you make that a signalised intersection, you will have backlog traffic.
Thank you, are there any further speakers, there being no further speakers, councillor Rosenfeld, would you like to close the debate?
Uh, I think I've more or less said what I had to say, it's fantastic the roundabout's coming. Uh, and there'll be a lot of people, uh, both in Central Ward and others that use this area, I'm very happy to, to hear that it is coming.
Thank you very much, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you, we now return to C S fifty slash twenty four. Investigation of uncontrolled parking of various types of R Vs, trailers, vehicles, boats on Anzac Parade. Moved councillor Sedd, seconded by councillor Burst, councillor Sedd is the mover.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um, I just want to move this as per the business paper, and I just wanted to thank. The council officers because it is pretty con- comprehensive, it has come quickly. And the recommendations are exactly sort of what we've been asking for, um. And I'd probably, I think the residents would probably go for option two with the pine logs. Um, but I do want to emphasise, which I congratulate Mister Zammert on. That the area, the number one priority is the area near Kane Avenue, we've had. Many complaints about people parking right up against the road, it's becoming very dangerous. A lot of residents, and I want to congratulate, um, uh, Duncan Scott as well, he's sent the rangers out there, he's been. Trying his hardest to make sure that the residents are placated and that we try to move these cars on. But seeing that, uh, nearly sort of, I think it's more than, oh, just on half of the res- uh, councillors now live in the South Ward. They probably continuously see the amount of cars that are parked there and it is, as I said, getting more and more dangerous all the time. The, and as I've said, we, in the report and as I mentioned in my motion. We didn't want to alienate the cars completely, we asked for certain spots where they can park the cars. And this way should placate the people that live in those houses and park in the, uh, medium strip. That way they can put them somewhere unless they don't have to bank them up on other areas around the area, so. Again, I commend the council officers on this report.
Councillor Burst.
Um, I also s- commend the, uh, our council staff on this. It's probably been the number one issue across Bays and Beaches precinct, Matchville precinct, Mallabar precinct. Um, it, it's a headline act on all of them, um. You know, that, um, we've got trailers everywhere across our area, so this will be a way of eliminating it. Where they go will be the next challenge, but that's, um, the next step, it's. There's always, as it, when there's an action, there's always an equal and opposite reaction, so, uh, we'll have to wait for that.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, as the third South Ward councillor, I concur with everything my other two ward councillors have said. This has been a niggling problem for a long time. Ever since Bundock Street or the parking restrictions there changed, trailers and other. R Vs, all these kind of vehicles have come and deposited themselves in the South Ward, especially on Anzac Parade. I've heard the name Zammatt and others, uh, named as people who made a difference. But I tell you what did make the difference, Mister Mayor. It was the general manager's presence at the precinct meeting. And this has been a niggling problem that has been going on and on and on, but let me say, sorry.
Ca- ca- councillor, all councillors will be heard in silence, please continue councillor D'Souza.
Let me say that the general manager Ray Branley's presence at that meeting has made a big difference. Because after that, we've got what's on this paper. And I thank him and I thank this council for moving forward on a problem which was very concerning to our residents. That was like a can being kicked down the street, till now we have a plan in motion. And we can get something positively done for the residents of the Th- South Ward, Mister Mayor, thank you very much, I fully support what's on the paper.
Thank you, are there any further speakers, councillor Sedd to close the debate. Okay, uh, we'll now put it, all those in favour? Those against, declare that carried, thank you. We now move to C S fifty two slash twenty four. Uh, Kensington West Kingsford Local Area Traffic Management Study, c- challenged by councillor Magna, councillor Magna, could you please outline what it is you're moving?
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, uh, fellow councillors, I rise in support of the recommendation, I'm moving in support, yeah.
Yep, thank you, uh, do I have a seconder? Seconder, uh, seconded by councillor Veach, yep, councillor Meg.
Um, thank you, Mister Mayor, um, I rise in support of the very good work that the council officers have done. Um, in relation to the proposed Kensington West Kingsford Local Area Traffic Management Study. Um, congratulate them for their successful application for funding, um. From the, uh, Transport for New South Wales Safer Roads Programme, um, six point two five. Million dollars worth of funds, um, the work has been undertaken since twenty twenty. I note that, um, there will be a report back to council. Following the public consultation, I think that this, um, process is ready to be released, um, for. Feedback from the community and I commend the, the motion to the council.
Thank you, I will go to councillor Veach as the seconder and then I will go to councillor Lutzford.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor, um, I am also very, uh, strongly in support of this motion, of this report. I'd like to thank all the officers involved, is, it's been a very, very long process. Uh, we've had so many, uh, queries and issues raised. Uh, by the residents of West Ward in this particular area in Kensington, West Kingsford, o- over, over many, many years. And I'm very hopeful that most, if not all of those, uh, will be addressed in this report. The crucial element is of course that this goes out now to a further consultation, to allow that. Uh, feedback to see if the responses to these concerns are being proposed. Are, are appropriate to allow for the residents to give that feedback. So it's very important that we sort of follow this through, get the report out, it would be wonderful to have some. Uh, community meetings with staff there able to answer questions directly. It may be difficult, uh, to actually get the sense of everything just from reading this report. So I hope that's a really robust consultation process. But this, uh, has, you know, residents have been waiting for this for a long time and they'll be very, very happy to, to see this out there.
Thank you, uh, councillor Lutzford.
Yeah, I'd just like to move an amendment to, um. This report, while I commend the ru- report and it has been a long time coming, I think councillor Stavridos and I asked for this. Two terms ago and it has finally come to light. Um, I would just like to move slightly, um, or add some points to it. That the proposed traffic lights at Todman Avenue and Ken- uh, and Kensington. Road, um, be. Not proceeded with and that, uh, the roundabout remains as the roundabout as it currently stands. Works quite well, uh, we already have four sets of lights on Todman Avenue as it is. And I would like the funding from the, that traffic, those traffic lights not being installed. To be directed towards, uh. Funding the reinstatement of the roundabouts at, at Day Avenue and. Day Avenue and Doncaster and Houston Road and Houston Road and Barker Streets. Uh, the other point is that the bike lane in Lenthel Street be. Removed from Lenthel Street or not proceeded with, um. Just preempting what the residents don't want there on Lenthel Street as it stands now. Uh, the road is way too narrow and as we did not proceed with. Uh, a bike lane, I believe the mayor was against on Maruba Road. Uh, I think that the fit for a bike lane on Lenthel Street. Uh, just won't go there, so tonight on our way through, I could not get out of my street. The traffic is bent up there bumper to bumper and nobody has taken into consideration. That there is a childcare centre on Lenthel Street that actually has its pick up and drop off. On Lenthel, so a bike lane would. Be detrimental to the safety of the childcare centre because they're already, it's. A bit hairy where they do do this drop off and pick up, so, um, just preempting. What I know my residents don't want is the bike lane on Lenthel Street. So that's my amendment and, yeah.
Thank you, councillor Haye is the seconder of the amendment.
Thank you, um, I've now gone through two elections where I've spoken to many residents about their concerns of traffic, particularly in this area. I've had plenty of people worried about speeding particularly along, uh, Tunstall Eastern and Cottonm, I've had people worried about. Uh, people coming on Lenthel and doing a, um, a rat run through Virginia Baker or maybe McDougall Baker, Millroy Baker. I've had lots of people worried about crossing Houston Road. I have not had a single person asked me for traffic lights at the corner of Kensington and Todman. There, I, I, I did have one lady ask us to trim the bushes and, um, Mister Clark, his, his department got onto that very quickly and I'd like to thank him for that. But there was not a single person asking for traffic lights at that intersection. The traffic flows through there quite well and we don't need traffic lights, in, in my humble opinion. We don't need traffic lights at the corner of Lenthel and Todman and Todman and Kensington and Todman and Anzac and Todman and Doncaster. That's quite a lot there, um, with regards to the bike lane, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to keep the bike lane as it currently is as road painting, um. That's fine, but having a separated bicycle lane, uh, is not something that, um. I feel is necessary at this stage, uh, so, uh, I'd generally go for these amendments.
Thank you, are there any further speakers on the amendment, councillor Sedd?
I actually support the amendment, Mister Mayor, cause I, looking at the, the picture that's in the business paper. I've just realised which includes the bike lanes of Todman Avenue and Lenthel Street. But if you look at the actual Kensington to West Kensington L A T M, when you look at the cycling section. It doesn't mention them, it only mentions, uh, separated Doncaster Avenue which has been made. To, um, Barker Street, shared path on eastern side of Anzac Parade and a shared path at Kensington Park. So, and Don- uh, Todman Avenue to Doncaster and a Coogee to Randwick, U N S W route, so, um. I think as councillor, I think someone's realised, as councillor, um, Lutzford has said, that the Lenthel. That the Lenthel Street bike track actually shouldn't exist because it doesn't, they've never mentioned it. Um, I remember in past councils, we were told that it was probably impractical and actually the Todman Avenue. Uh bike path was probably was, we were being told it was too hard to make because of the roundabout. I suppose the lights, pro- probably the reasoning for the lights. My only issue is that, um. I think we could be arguing over things that um aren't in actually in the papers. It's two different sort of things. So anyway, my my point is that I actually go with the uh amendment. Because the amendment actually suits what's actually within the business paper.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Uh can councillor Magna, do you accept the amendment?
Uh, no, the amendment is not accepted.
Are there any further speakers? Ah councillor Veach.
Thank you. Um, I won't be supporting the amendment. Sorry, excuse me. That's not a separated cycle path, that's just a cycle way.
So, so, so please continue councillor Veach.
Apologies. Um, I don't think, as far as I'm aware, a separated bicy- cycle path is being proposed. Um, I I would like councillors, you know. This has been such a long process. This has literally taken years. And I know for a fact that, you know, there are probably hundreds of emails I've received about. Many different sort of fine grained uh issues at particular intersections and so on. Um, over the years have all been referred to this traffic study. So it's been a really detailed process. And to come and make changes on the floor when we haven't even put this back out for the feedback. I think is inappropriate. I don't know that we'll, I completely uh understand the issues with a cycle path on Lenthel Street. It would be wonderful in theory, but I think it will be very difficult to implement. I don't know that uh in in any case, we would have to apply for funding that would go, have to go to a council vote. That would be a completely separate uh process. And so just putting this out there now would actually probably uh give residents an opportunity. To formally uh note any concerns and then that could then feed back. Down the track as to whether we actually go down that path, sorry for the bad pun, but of of ever putting a bike path there. Todman Avenue is much, a much more likely outcome. It's the same with the roundabouts. Uh a lot of work is being done on Doncaster and Houston with roundabouts. I'm not necessarily against them, but I just think, uh. I just don't want to stuff around with it at this point and let the residents give their their feedback. I would personally like to hear that feedback myself, rather than just preempting it. And if they're, you know, if the feedback comes back in support of this, I'd be happy to support it. But if we don't have it there, we won't have the opportunity to hear what the residents would like. So uh I would urge councillors to vote for the recommendation on the business papers with this one. Um, it's, there's just too much detail there to 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 kind of mess with at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? There being no further speakers on the amendment, I'll now put it. All those in favour, all those against, I declare the amendment lost. Okay, there's been a call for a division. Um, okay, all those in favour of the amendment, please raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, Hay, Luxford, uh Rosenfeld, Martin, Sed and Burst, all those against. Councillor Wellington, Magna, Veach, Gordon, Asgari, Wilson, D'Souza and the mayor. I declare the amendment lost. We now return to the recommendation on the business paper, the substantive debate. Councillor Hay, do you wish to talk?
Uh, I'd like to move uh perhaps a slightly watered down version of that amendment. Um, so if we could have as a point B, s- sorry, I haven't set this through, I'll just dictate on the floor. Um. Uh, that the proposed traffic lights at Todman and Kensington Road. Are seen as a lower priority and, um. That are seen as a lower priority and um deferred for consideration at a later stage. And. Um, yes, so we just add. And W. Um, so yes, uh they basically, as I said when I was seconding the original motion, um. I have not had a great call for um traffic lights at the intersection of uh Todman and Kensington. Now, there's about forty other things we can do in this L A T M. Uh, putting uh signalised traffic lights at that intersection is uh very difficult. Uh costly and uh frankly, we can do. There, there's a lot of things we can do. We should prioritise all of the other smaller things first. Because uh the people who are on Eastern Cotton, the people who are worried about rat runs. Uh into Baker Street, other other people. I, and can I also add another uh point C? Um, that alternative be, alternatives be considered to uh road cushions. Um, but to as, and road humps where possible. Now, we 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 went through this a couple of years ago along Snape Street in uh on the Maruba Kingsford border. Where if you live next to a speed bump, you end up hating it. Because every time a truck, a bus, anything big comes over, it's clank, 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 like a, all night. We went through a huge deal of going through everything on Snape Street and after, four years after putting them in, we pulled them out. So, um, I I, I'm not saying that we definitely take those out of the L A T M. But I'm saying we just consider it. Um, I'm also not, Mr Kelly, that's added as an additional point. So I'm not. So I'm I'm happy to go with the recommendation in the business paper and we add these as two extra points as well.
Okay, thank you. Can I just confirm there is a seconder for that? Uh seconded councillor Luxford. Um, okay, so it is as per the business paper with the additional two points. Are there any further speakers in relation to it? Councillor Magna, do you accept it?
Um, in the spirit of trying to get consensus, um I wonder if um uh councillor Hay would um. Move only B, um I would, or C as it is now in relation to the road cushions and. Um, road humps where possible.
What's the um, um, otherwise not.
Uh, okay.
Uh, can we make it as um.
So ju- just to, just, it's just councillor Magnus put a proposition to the mover, so I will go to the mover of the amendment.
What if I were to reword that as, instead of a a seen as a lower priority. Uh, that we ask the residents uh in the community consultation for what the priority of that, those traffic lights should be.
Okay, through to the mover. Do you accept any of that?
I recognise that councillor Hay and Luxford are coming from a very genuine, good place. Um, but I'm reluctant to accept the amendment unless they're open to amending it in the way that it's been proposed. Um, I'm hearing that they're not, so on that basis, the proposed amendment um is not supported um subject.
Th- thank you. Councillor Veach has a suggestion to the uh mover of the amendment?
Yeah, I agree with point C in that it would be, it's it's a tricky one. There's been a lot of calls for slowing the traffic. Uh, but the road cushions can cause a lot of issues. In terms of point B, I think that is the point of this consultation, that people will be able to give the feedback, you know, on these lights. And so if people aren't saying anything uh about it, then it will necessarily be uh probably listed. I imagine, actually I might ask a question through to uh the director of city services. Um, as a result of this con- uh consultation.
So, so, sorry, sorry, hold on. A point of order has been raised. I I do have to hear the point of order. I will then rule on said point of order and then I will go back to councillor Veach who was asking a question.
Firstly, you've got councillor uh Magna just wandering around the chambers while uh we've got a councillor talking. So she should be able to be heard in silence.
Councillor Magna was on his feet from time to time. Councillors do get up. I would remind all councillors that there has been extensive interjection throughout this debate. Um, and remind all councillors, and I I emphasise all, in relation to the conduct, in relation to that, I do uphold the point of order however. Um councillor Veach, please continue.
Uh, thank you. Um, in terms of point B, I guess, um. I I just don't quite understand how this will work because part of the idea, I assume, is that the um. All of these different uh recommendations are are out there in terms of treatments or ideas and response. You know, issues have been raised, ideas have been put forward. And now residents will get a chance, an opportunity to to make their comment and identify whether they are a priority. Uh, or or not. And so I'm not sure that, uh, is that correct? Is that how this will work? Is i- is it appropriate to prioritise? Uh, certain, uh. You know, certain measures to be undertaken in this project at this stage? Or is that something that will happen after the consultation?
Uh, through to the director of city services.
Thank you through yourself, Mr Mayor. Um, the way I interpret uh. Item B of that amendment um would be that as part of the consultation exercise that would happen post um resolution of council. That that residents are asked in that consultation phase uh what um they would like to prioritise. In terms of the devices, councillor, um hey, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's the way I would interpret that amendment.
Through to the director of city services.
So my follow up question would be, uh would point, is point B, uh would that just be in line with what's already happening anyway? Or would this, what would be the effect of including point, point B?
Through to the director of city services.
Uh, I'd I'd have to to take on notice, I I'm not um around the consultation strategy that's proposed. Other than that, we are going to the community on the, on the forty or so devices that have been proposed and seeking their feedback. But I would um say to the council that it's not uncommon to prioritise um projects um in a, in a corridor. The last report that um council just conceded was Maruba, in which we prioritised um certain elements of that, from the community feedback.
Yes, you may.
So, could you just remind us, uh in case we read it and then forgot? Um, when this all comes back, will we be getting a sort of, when this all comes back? You know, there's really like many, many different devices and measures being proposed in this study. It's very, very detailed. How will this come back to council? Will it come back in one big lot? Will we be voting on sort of certain areas? You, you know, how will these things come back to a vote? Is that?
Through to the director of city services.
Thank you. Through yourself, Mr Mayor. Council has um has been recently advised, been successful in obtaining um the the six million dollar grant. Uh, as based off the initial uh research from the L A T M uh process, we focused many of those. Um, with the grant application into the proposed devices in the south. So when we go out for consultation, I will see that, it will seek to see that the consultation lines up with. Uh, the funding applications and the grant uh funding with the uh recommendations proposed in the south. So um they would um more than likely occur first, the southern area of that K W K um L A T M. Albeit, there is only one or so million dollars remaining. Most of the devices will uh eventually be recommended to council in a subsequent year. Um, so there will be an element of prioritisation uh once we come back to council with a consultation feedback.
Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I will now put the amendment. All those in favour, all right, all those against. I declare the amendment lost. Okay, there's been a request for a division. Okay, seconded by councillor Hamilton. All those in favour of the amendment. Councillor, uh Hamel- yeah, okay, we have councillor Hamilton, Hay, Luxford, Rosenfeld, Wellington, Sed, Burst. Sorry, my po- Martin, my apologies. It's the new curse. The old curse was worse, but that's the new one. Uh, we, okay, all those against, please raise your hand. We, we, all those against the amendment. Yeah, no, we're in the middle of voting. So all those against the amendment. Um, uh councillor Wellington, councillor Magna, councillor Veach, councillor Gordon, councillor Asgari, councillor Wilson, councillor D'Souza. And the mayor, I declare the amendment lost. Okay, we now move to the substantive debate on the motion. Are there any further speakers? Okay, councillor, uh Veach, could you please outline what it is you're moving?
Which was the recommendation on the business papers plus what was point C in the previous one.
Alternatives to road cushions. Can I just confirm? No, no, I don't believe it's that one.
So the 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 first one, the business papers and uh the the item about the traffic cushions.
Okay, thank you. So there is an A. Okay, and a C. Is that correct councillor?
Yes.
Veach, councillor Magna, do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speak- is there a second to the, oh no, it's accepted. Are there any further speakers on the motion which has now been amended amended to incorporate that new point? There being no further speakers, councillor Magna, do you wish to close the debate?
Uh, just very briefly, thank um all the councillors for their contributions. Clearly, uh everyone is passionate and committed to the process. And I think um in the same way that we consulted the councillors, I hope that the public consultation process.
Thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to C S fifty-four slash twenty-four, Coogee Beach Amenities, Chaos and Bus Shelter Project. Outcomes of stage two community consultation, uh moved by councillor Wilson. Councillor Wilson, could you please outline uh what it is that you are moving?
I would like to move this in an amended fashion and I believe the amendment has gone through to Mr Kelly. Thank you, Mr Kelly. Um, and the essence of the amendment is that. We can see from the consultation, we can see from the um speaker that um came tonight. Thank you, Mr England, that was very helpful, that. What, what our local community is wanting and what the people who are using Coogee Beach is wanting. Is something that is fit for purpose, which the current um arrangement is not. Um, we'd like uh to have nice new amenities, but we'd like them to be sympathetic to the beach. We're not happy about the appearance of the, of the um. Proposal that's been made um by the architects, Sam Crawford. And we'd like, um, you can see from the amendment. That we're requesting a minor revision to the concept for a new building to incorporate where practicable. Stylistic features from the existing building, yet retaining all the additional features. Um, and footprint and functionality. And so what, what we would like, what, what I'm moving is a. Um, a a revision of the knockdown builder, um rebuild plan. To make it sympathetic in the same way as the current building that we have is sympathetic to what was there before. And what was, and the tram shed that's on the corner, which is actually a heritage tram shed on the corner of Arden and Carr. So that people coming to the beach can appreciate, as Mr England said. So that people coming to the beach can appreciate, as Mister England said. The village atmosphere and the heritage appeal of Coogee, rather than trying to change its character. And so um that's the amendment, um as I'd like to move it. I'm looking for a second.
Is there a second? I see a hand up from councillor Asgari. Thank you, councillor Asgari.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm happy to speak on the matter and do some amendments. And thank you to Mister England.
Okay, can I can I just confirm councillor Asgari? Do you support it as written there or are you seeking to amend the motion?
No, I have another.
Okay, what I will, what what I what I will ask councillor Asgari. Is I will call for a second on the motion as moved by councillor Wilson. Once the second is spoken, I will come straight back to you. Um do I have a second, councillor Martin? No. Do we have a second of the motion as moved by councillor Wilson? Uh councillor D'Souza? Thank you. Councillor D'Souza, do you wish to speak? Okay, thank you. Councillor Asgari, all yours. Uh councillors, could all councillors be heard in silence? Think think. If you could just wait one second, if you don't mind. Um ca- councillors Hamilton and Rosenfeld, if you could talk outside if possible, all, thank you. Councillor Asgari, if you could please move your amendment. Thank you.
Um so can I first say something and then Mister Kelly will put the amendments there? First of all, I want to thank Mister England for his um fabulous presentation. And I want to um add to that, that I oppose to the item C S fifty four slash twenty four Coogee Beach. Amenities and do not support the recommendations for a new build as it currently stands. It has been discussed in Coogee precinct meeting, and the members unanimously expressed. Their views on the need to upgrade the present building, retaining the heritage appears. Which which matches the Coogee Village environment. An upgrade could include provision for a storage facility, an additional Q S sitting. As well as more female designated toilets. More adequate ventilation in the toilet is strongly advised. So I have amendments. So Mister Kelly, would you please put them up? So I'd like to delete A and B. And add A, that council endorsed the refurbishment. And funding strategy for existing facilities.
Okay, just one second, one second. Just one second. Thank you. Do I have a second for councillor Asgari's amendment? Is seconded from councillor Veach. Yes, um councillor Asgari, would you like to continue speaking to your amendment? Please continue.
And B, receive a repeat, a report on options. For the design, location and budget for a s- storage facility for Coogee S L S C.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll just momentarily pause. There it is. Okay, thank you. Okay, councillor Veach as the second of the amendment.
Uh thank you. Yes, I've also received a number of emails and representations uh from the community. Um there seemed to be quite a strong uh desire to refurbish the current buildings. Um and I also acknowledge and support uh the request from uh the Coogee S L S C. Uh regarding the need for storage, and so I believe it's worth considering possibly um an alternative location. Uh for for that, because I don't know that there's necessarily a need to put it right there in the middle of the main. Uh park area that people use, so um the refurbishment also, uh it has pretty much this, you know. It will meet the demands of the community. It will be significantly uh cheaper. Uh which I think is a really good thing as well. We have uh some wonderful new uh toilets which were built. I can't remember how long ago, maybe six or seven years ago, eight years ago now, um uh the big amenity block right down near the beachfront at Coogee. Um so, and I think also at Goldstream Reserve as well, so um I think this is the right. Uh option. I don't know, I don't support um councillor Wilson's uh uh amendment. I think it will be tricky to combine the two uh designs. Uh although I understand and respect the intent uh behind it. But I think we, if that were to be the case, it would have to go back. To a completely new design process to try and see how that would would work. So um I support the amendment as moved by councillor Asgari.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment as moved by councillor Asgari to A refurbish? Uh and uh and ex- uh and endorse the funding strategy of the existing uh facilities? And B, receive a report on options for design, location and budget for a storage facility for the Coogee Surf Life Saving Club? Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Okay, there are no further speakers on the amendment. Uh I will now put it. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that lost. Okay, thank you. The councillor Martin has foreshadowed an amendment. Okay, councillor.
Councillor recommendation?
Do you wish to, oh, oh, in support of the original one? So you're foreshadowing that you will move it as. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I thought you were going to speak to that. My apologies. That's all right. We will now go to the debate. That that as, which is why I apologize. Thank you. Uh so we have a hand up. We are on the motion as moved by councillor Wilson, uh councillor. Uh Wilson and D'Souza. Um are there any further speakers? I have a hand up from councillor Luxford. Councillor Luxford?
Yeah, I just have a question. Um so. In order to have a revision of these plans, a revised concept, um. What kind of cost are we actually looking at to go back again? Because when the original plans were put through, um councillor. Um. God, I've forgotten her already. Councillor Nielsen and myself both objected. To the this, the concept plan that we've ended up with. Um and um, you know, weren't really in favour of it. And somehow or other, we've ended up with it, and that's fine. But to go back again now and revise things, like what kind of. Dollars would we be looking at? How much have we spent already and how much more would we be looking at? To go back to the, to these people and say, change the design?
Uh through to the Director of City Services.
Thank you through yourself, uh Mister Mayor. Ob- obviously, there would um be a financial occasion to to go back and redesign again. But I'd have to take the exact one I wanted to notice.
So the ballpark figure, are we talking thousands, hundreds of thousands? Exactly. So whereabouts in the, in there would we fit? Exactly. Between thou- thousands, hundreds of thousands for a revision of this. Um concept that we have now in front of us?
Through to the Director of City Services.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um councillors, it's unlikely that it'd be hundreds of thousands of dollars. Um it'd be likely that the architect, they've done a lot of the work, they'd be changing the facade to make it more. Um sympathetic to what's actually at Coogee now, so that wouldn't be hundreds of thousands of dollars, that'd be tens of thousands of dollars worth of work. But we need to get that estimate from the architect.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further questions? Uh okay, I have a hand up from councillor Hay. Uh yes, you you may.
Uh councillors, this has been deferred uh many times, it's been gone through. Uh various planning, uh consultations, approvals. I'm. To kick the, to to endorse the motion as currently put by. Uh councillor Wilson, I fear we'll just defer this yet again. Uh this, I I maintain my original position, I said many years ago, this this is a very disgusting toilet block to walk in. It's not something that I like having as uh one of our most prominent toilet blocks. It gives a very bad impression. I really just want uh this work to start as soon as possible. And I fear that redesigning the entire building will delay this by another year. And I don't think we uh want to do that. Let's start working on great infrastructure. And I urge everyone to vote against uh councillor Wilson's motion and support. Uh the foreshadowed motion moving as per the business paper when the time arises.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment moved Wilson D'Souza? Uh councillor Sid.
Just a few questions, because I don't entirely oppose the uh new motion, but I also. Asked the council officers, if we were to take in where we could, parts retaining the original features. Um if you look at the the existing one, it's terracotta tiles, and obviously terracotta tiles near a beach would be inappropriate. So that would have to go, and I imagine if you look at the new building, which I admit is not very sexy, but. Maybe in the flesh it might look better, but I think the flat roof, tell me if I'm wrong. Must have a lot to do with solar power panels on the roof. The actual, there'd be a lot of sustainability with water, et cetera, so sort of trying to blend in with the landscape. And also, you couldn't keep, and another question for the council officer. Um so there's three questions. One is, virtually you would not be able to have a pitched roof with terracotta tiles, I'm sure. Is that, if I'm correct? And you, let you know, you can answer me if I'm correct or not. Secondly, um are we incorporating solar panels and a lot of sustainability with water tanks, et cetera? In the new build? And thirdly, which is probably why we've got a flat roof? And then thirdly, um. Is it possible to keep the existing footprint if we have these storage facilities?
Through to the Director of City Services.
Thank you through yourself, uh Mister Mayor. Uh question one in relation to the the pitched roof, the the concept plan. Um that as presented to council tonight does have a um a curved layout, a pitched roof is possible. Um but but complex, given the the curved nature of the design. Um but I I do read um or interpret the the resolution of uh councillor, sorry, the motion of councillor Wilson to say stylistic features. Um not necessarily the the materials. Um the, and question two, solar panels and environmentally. Sensitive design ele- elements will be incorporated into to the design. I can't confirm exactly what they are at this stage, but all projects will be considered of solar panels, water tanks. Um and energy efficient options and the like. Um and the the third question, the existing uh footprint. Uh would not um fit the the proposed um elements in the knockdown rebuild design.
Okay, through to the uh questioner. Are there any further questions? Councillor Sid?
If we move it in the way that it is up there, would that mean that. We'd have to remove footprint because it can't happen?
Through to the Director of City Services.
Uh through you, Mister Mayor, I don't believe so.
Alright, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Yep, uh okay, uh there being no further speakers, um councillor Wilson to close the debate. Thank you.
Yes, I commend this amendment, or this amend amended notion to you, on on the basis that we're talking about. Incorporating where practicable stylistic features, not necessarily materials. We're talking about, what I was talking about was the fact that you can look through that building from the bus shelter. You can look through to the beach, and and you can look through that building from a number of angles, and that's part of what we're trying to retain. Um it it's got to be practicable, uh but the idea is to have. A compromise between a nice new clean building that's easy for council officers to maintain. And something that's sympathetic to what's already there. Um I I hesitate to accept uh councillor Hay's suggestion that we rush into something. Because it's easy. I think this is a really, really significant building. And it's in a really, really significant position, and we really don't want to rush into it. Yes, I agree, those toilets are not nice at all, and we do need to change them. But we changed the toilets in um Dunningham Reserve. Because we had a demountable there for years, as you recall. We didn't rush into that. We did something that I think is. Very appropriate and suitable because we took our time and we thought about it very carefully. And that's what the community is asking us to do. To come back to this, yes. Think about having a new building. It's a great idea to have a nice, new, clean, easy to maintain building. That's sympathetic to the situation, to the context of the building. So I commend the motion to you.
Okay, thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? I declare that carried. There's been, okay, there's been a request for a division. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Okay, we have councillor Wellington, councillor Magna, councillor Veach. Councillor Gordon, councillor Asgari, councillor Wilson, councillor Sid, councillor D'Souza, and the mayor, I declare that carried. Uh all those against? Councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford. Councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Martin, councillor Burst. I declare uh the motion carried. Thank you. Uh the motion being carried, you can't move a foreshadowed motion. We will now move to the next item on, do we, do we want to have a break? Yeah, yeah, okay. Um councillors, it being nine o'clock, we will have a ten minute break and return at nine ten. In relation to a point made or a question that was already raised by, uh, the speaker tonight.
Will there be lights installed above the dog park at Burrows?
Uh, through to the rel, can I, you're moving us per the business paper?
Yeah.
Yep, thank you, thank you, through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, through yourself, mister mayor, um, there is no current proposal in the master plan, it's before council tonight to install, uh, lights at the dog park.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, um, for confirming that, I appreciate and I'm sure that the residents would appreciate that. Was raised as a concern, um, with me multiple times, we had a, let's chat, catch up with Northwood residents and, I had a little book with me and I was noting down people's names and, and their concerns and I had three pages of concerns about Burrows Park, so, it's something that really has, uh, worried the residents and, and rightly so, I, I'm, um, you know, I, I'm also worried as a resident that we would have something that might impose on the, the headland so much that it takes away, the character and the natural charm, so I'm really pleased with, um, you know, option C, I think it's really sensible. The splitting up of the, the plan to, to improve the site with amenities and then the field as well. Second, second. Can you second it?
There, there is a hand up from councillor Burst to second it.
Second it.
Councillor Burst.
Um, so I think that this, this plan is, it's, it's a very sensible plan. The size of the new amenities block, it, it also alleviates a lot of the fears of the residents around it being a huge community centre, and having, you know, static barbecues and, and so, and also the fact that, you know, they were saying the grandstand and they were saying, a lit up, um, electrified, you know, sports board. So all of those things I feel have really been, uh, resolved with the release of this master plan. And, you know, I commend the staff, when I first got on council in twenty seventeen, I went to the site, visited the, uh, Clavella Crocs, went inside the building and it is really an old building and it's very, very poky and small and, and falling apart, and so, um, director of city services, before he was the director of city services, came along with me. And it's one of those institutions, the, the sports field and the clubs that use it, it's a real institution, they've been there for over a hundred years. And so the fact that the council have alleviated the fears of a huge portion of the community, as, um, miss Warner pointed out, while also delivering for the sports clubs and the residents and sporting people in the community. So I'm really pleased and I hope everyone supports it, thank you.
Councillor Burst is the second.
I'll reserve the right.
Thank you, are there any further speakers councillor Magna?
Uh, thank you, mister mayor, I also rise to support the motion by Hamilton Burst, um, I want to firstly start by recognizing the advocacy work of the Friends of Borough Park, um, and, um, they're a active group that care passionately about the local environment and the local community and they've done a, a tremendous job, um, in advocating for a good outcome. Um, while I understand that there was considerable, community anxiety about the original proposal, um, over the original consultation and, I am very pleased that as a result of the good work, um, that was acknowledged by the speakers tonight, um, from the council officers in engaging with the community, answering their concerns, we've ended up with a, more favorable outcome, uh, as a result of their advocacy and engagement. Um, it is perhaps worth mentioning that it could have been done better. Um, and I think that council officers perhaps, uh, recognise that there was more money spent on various, uh, proposals, uh, than perhaps could have been spent and I hope that some valuable lessons are learnt, uh, along, the way by council officers. But as councillor Hamilton said, the existing amenities block is not fit for purpose, there's shipping containers that are clearly inadequate. Um, as, uh, Leanne Warner said, the facilities are not fit for purpose for women's, uh, and girls' sports and, this facility isn't, um, just about upgrading, uh, the amenity, it's about activating our community and getting our kids, uh, to play sport in an area where they don't need to travel, um, and doing so, in, in such a way, that doesn't adversely impact upon the environment and I commend the motion, um, and thank the council officers for their work up to this point.
Thank you councillor Wellington.
Yes, I'd just like to briefly speak in support of the, um, of the proposal, um, option C is an excellent, um, resolution of all the needs and, um, I'm particularly pleased, it's the one that has the least impact upon, uh, the wildlife, there's considerable wildlife, um, in that part of. the wildlife, there's considerable wildlife in that part of Kogi and it will cause the least impact and particularly at night, the proposed building will not cause too much light spill, it will actually act as a shade to the bush behind and I hope that at the, at the conclusion of the new build, we'll be able to plant very beautifully all around it and also around the dog park to support biodiversity in that area, they're a very important part of Randwick and it's nice to see that all the Northwood councillors are in agreement, face agreement on this, thank you.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers councillor Hamilton, do you wish to close the debate? Thank you, all right, I will now put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
All those against, declare that carried, thank you. We now move to C S fifty six slash twenty four Snack Park Indoor Sporting Facility Concept Design Challenge by councillor Luxford.
So I would just like to move this as per the recommendation on the business paper. This has been a, an ongoing little project and finally we are getting some some parts of the project happening and the rest to come along, so I commend the report and the recommendation on the business paper.
I saw councillor Hay was very quick, councillor Hay.
Thanks, I'm very excited by this facility, particularly we have a indoor cricket nets for summer and it'll also be a rugby league training facility winter. Enables our teams to do very well, Rhymer Peterisham Cricket and River Lions, they can train in all weather, that'll give them the edge on the competition and they'll hopefully win against other suburbs and I urge everyone to vote, to vote for this.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza, do you wish to speak? Thank you, are there any further speakers on the matter? Councillor Luxford, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you, there being no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. We now move to C C twenty three slash twenty four Multicultural Event for Randwick Challenge by councillor Rosenfeld. Councillor Rosenfeld, could you please outline what it is you are moving and then I will then call for a seconder.
Okay, I sent the slight amendment to David Kelly, so I fully support multicultural event, fantastic, it is finally happening. I just want to add D, so everyone can see there, that the event be held on a Sunday to allow those Jewish community members to attend who's, who observe Shabbat on Saturday, for those not aware, Shabbat is the Jewish Sabbath. So basically, not myself, but a lot of people in the Jewish community don't engage in these social activities on, on the Shabbat and hence as well as many other, many other members of the community and for different backgrounds will enjoy themselves at this event, it'll be possible for those in the Jewish community who observe Shabbat to join in on a Sunday. I do note that the event's going to go from three onwards and the Shabbat either goes out in the wintertime at five thirty once they go out, finishes and about seven thirty in the summertime, so they won't be able to attend in either way, so I'd like you to support that motion.
Just confirming the seconder of the motion. The seconder of the motion. Councillor Burst, councillor Burst is the seconder. Would you wish to speak to the motion?
I'll reserve the right.
Okay, thank you, I have a hand up from councillor Luxford who is moving an amendment, councillor Luxford, could you please outline your amendment?
Yeah. The removal of point D from this motion, so having worked closely with the events people over the last eight years to have, well, seven years, going for eight years to have a multicultural event held. The multicultural event that we are holding will be something that will be unique to Randwick and different, starting with a family event in the, during the day and then moving to Mediterranean nights or something, we don't know yet, we haven't got names or whatever. In the eve, going on from the evening with something for the younger crowds. So this event can only, will only really work properly on a Saturday because it will be going to ten o'clock at night. A Sunday for residents in the area going to that, to that, that time may not, you know, we might strike a bit of, bit of angst etcetera. But as councillor Rosenfeld has mentioned, the Shabbat ends at sunset, so it seeming that this goes till ten at night, even if it ends at seven, people still get to attend for three hours of the, of the festival because it will be going all day and, and night, so the removal of D because it's in the event that will be happening.
Do I have a seconder, seconded by councillor Veach? Are there any further speakers on the amendment? There being no further speakers on the amendment, I will now put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
I declare the amendment carried. Okay, there's been a request for a division. Okay, all those in favour of the amendment, please raise your hand. We have councillor Wellington, councillor Magna, councillor Veach, councillor Luxford, councillor Gordon, councillor Asgaro, councillor Wilson, councillor Sedd, councillor D'Souza and the mayor, all those against, we have councillor Hay, Hamilton, Rosenfeld, Martin and Burst. I declare the amendment carried. Councillor Luxford, you now move the motion as amended. Before I do that, are there any further speakers on the motion as amended? There being no further speakers on the motion as amended, councillor Luxford, would you like to close the debate?
Yeah, so I move.
Councillor Sedd, would you like to, unless you'd like to close the debate councillor Luxford? Councillor Sedd.
I know it's not, thank you, Mr Mayor, just want to point out and I know it's not probably deliberate and it's just in thought, but on page one three nine where it mentions, you know, cultural backgrounds, Greek, Indonesian, Filipino, Italian, African and French. If you look at the demographics of Randwick L G A, the highest demographic is Chinese, there's a lot of Brazilians which I think would probably add a lot of fun. There's Irish, there's even English, there's, so I mean, what I'm saying, it's, I know, I'm just saying that it'd be like to include that we make sure we go by the demographics of the L G A and include just about everybody.
Councillor Luxford in reply.
Okay, so I would like to move as per the business paper. Just in closing, we have worked, well, I have worked tirelessly on this formally with councillor Singh, who is no longer with us. No, you didn't let me finish, no longer with us on council, but he was a great supporter of this event. So finally, hopefully it comes to fruition, the idea and the aim is to get as many different nationalities etcetera there as we can, with their food, with their culture, with their dance, with whatever it is they can afford to us and leading into the night time with a little bit of something for the younger multicultural kids that enjoy their, you know, Ibiza, Mykonos Nights, whatever kind of show and get the place cracking, so I commend the staff for all the work that has been done and look forward to this event finally coming into fruition.
Thank you, I'll now put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? There's been a request for a division, okay, all those in favour of the motion as moved? I declare that unanimous. Okay, thank you. We now move to the next item, C C twenty five slash twenty four Report back commemoration of the French explorer Jean Francois de Galop, Comp de l'Apples, moved councillor Burst. Councillor Burst, could you please outline what you're moving?
I'd like to move as per the business papers and I'll reserve the right.
Thank you, seconded councillor D'Souza, councillor D'Souza, do you wish to speak?
No, Mr Mayor, reserve my right.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I, there's no debate to close, to reply to, I'll now put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
All those against, declare that carried, thank you. We now move to C C twenty six slash twenty four Early Childhood Education and Care Worker Retention Payment Grant Challenge by councillor Veach.
Sorry, and I just tried to send an amendment which disappeared because I hadn't, didn't have my wifi on, so I'll have to read it. The amendment is to retain, keep the point A and add an additional point B, which is that council write to the federal government calling on them to continue the grant funding beyond the two year limit to ensure that early childhood education and care workers continue to receive the benefits of the pay increase. Councillors, this is a really great initiative of the, of the federal government, early childhood and care workers have been calling for a pay increase and much, much needed pay increase for, for many years. It's been a little bit complicated, there's had to be various arrangements made to create a splinter award and so on to ensure that councils can actually be eligible to apply for this, so that is currently in train. However, at the moment, the grant in effect is, has only been guaranteed for two years. If, if the grant is not continued for two years, councils will be left with a choice and we will likely to continue to, to pay for it ourselves, so this was also a, a conference, the conference motion put by the board at the local government, New South Wales Conference has called for the same thing, it was passed unanimously by all the councils, so we need to make this permanent, so we would just be supporting the call to continue the grant. So I hope you will support the amendment.
Second that, for a second.
Seconder councillor D'Souza, councillor D'Souza, do you wish to speak, are there any further speakers? There being no further, councillor Wilson, my apologies.
A question to the mover of the motion. Are you suggesting, because my understanding of the fourth dot point here is that the period end is set to coincide with the review of the twenty three to twenty six New South Wales Local Government State Award, so are you suggesting that the award negotiation shouldn't include increase because we're getting subsidy money or, please explain?
No, not, not at all, the grant is on top of anything that's happening, so this is just relating to the, the grant application and to the, the grant money that's flowing from the, the federal government, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers councillor Veach, do you wish to close the debate? Okay, thank you, I'll now put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
All those against, declare that carried. C C twenty seven slash twenty four Australia Day celebrations with Surf Life Saving Clubs Report Back, challenged by councillor Veach.
Thank you, I'd like to move this in a slightly amended fashion, which is to keep point A and B and for a new point C, which is to receive a report, which would relate to twenty twenty six, so no change to the twenty twenty five ceremonies happening in just over a month's time. To look at holding the Australia Day Citizenship Ceremonies and Community Service Awards within the three days before or after January twenty twenty six and also to see if there are options for holding them as separate events in order that we allow, you know, we can accommodate more guests at each event. Some people were a little bit disappointed, there was a wonderful event at council this year, however, because of combining, there are a number of reasons why I think receiving this report and looking at other options could be really beneficial. One is we hold, whatever your views are on that particular day and there's a lot of different views, there are a lot of events happening on that day, it is also now incredibly hot, many people are still on holidays. There is a lot going on and there's, if you do want to partake of events of different kinds on that day, there's a lot to cram in. And so what we found this year is that I think attendances were, were down somewhat from previous years. We didn't get so many, we had probably less than half of the people coming to receive their citizenships come along and that was simply because they were probably still on holiday, perhaps they preferred to have it on a different day or there may have been all sorts of other reasons. In terms of the recipients, very well deserving recipients of the Community Service Awards, the feedback was that they would have liked to have invited more guests and people have also, there have been some suggestions to hold that award ceremony perhaps on New South Wales Volunteer Day or another day. So it can be a standalone event that would give them the recognition they deserve and, and allow for more guests to come. However, this is not proposing, we endorse this now, it's a call for a report and councillors could then consider the options put forward by the staff to see how we, we proceed and so and the, the event happening in January twenty twenty five, the beginning of, very beginning of next year would go ahead as planned. So I hope you will support the motion, thank you.
Thank you, is there a seconder? Seconded by councillor Wellington, councillor Wellington, do you wish to speak to it?
I think that it's a suggestion worthy of consideration, a report and further discussion. It doesn't interfere in any way with the already planned events for the coming year and there are many practical and other reasons why we should think carefully about what we do, thank you. I hope you will support the.
Thank, thank you, I saw a hand up from councillor Hay, then a hand up from councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Hay.
I'd like to push out a moving this as per the business paper, councillors, I'm thoroughly against this, we have Australia Day where we hold our citizenship ceremonies and Community Service Awards, we debated this thoroughly last term and we absolutely should hold it on the national day, certain people, it's a public holiday where people have a day off. They can come and, and attend the events perhaps, I, I think the Covid times are over, so we could probably fit more people into the Prince Henry Centre at Little Bay and therefore we could alleviate some of the concerns about not being able to invite as many guests as, as liked. Ultimately, we should, we, we should have a national celebration on our national day and it's the time for us to come to go to this community. So I urge everyone to vote this down and we'll go as written on the business paper, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just for the benefit of the meeting and I've just sought confirmation from the general manager in relation to that, councillor Hay has foreshadowed that in the event that the motion is moved by councillor Veach, Wellington fails, that he will move the motion as per the business paper, the opportunity to do so only occurs in the event that the motion is moved. that he will move the motion as per the business paper. The opportunity to do so only occurs in the event that the motion fails. If the motion is carried, we move on to the next item. Can I confirm that to the general manager? Okay, thank you. Alright, just, thank you. Uh, I saw a hand, it was councillor Rosenfeld, then I'll go to councillor Sed.
I guess, um, as you will recall, um, the, I was the one that, um, challenged the item from council offices to make sure we kept the citizenship and the community awards on Australia Day. Um, and I'll basically say what I said that night, um, that, that many, many people uh, do like having their citizenship ceremonies on Australia Day and find it privileged to have it on Australia Day. And I believe it's important to continue to celebrate Australia Day. We still need to recognise the wrongs that have been done to the Indigenous people. But at the same time, it's important, uh, we live in such a fantastic country to, to, to celebrate Australia Day. And, and have these, uh, these awa- these, these, uh, citizenship cer- ceremonies and community awards on, 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 on this day. I find it's very important to, to keep that and, uh, so I'm, uh, against this particular, uh, motion.
Sorry, I have a hand up from councillor Hay.
Apologies, I'd like to, rather than foreshadow, I'd like to just move an amendment that we switch it back to as per the business paper.
Okay, we'll go straight to you councillor Hay. Councillor Hay, do we have a seconder for the amendments? Yep, no, 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 no. There is a second, no, councillor Hayes moved an amendment. The amendment gets put immediately. Councillor Hay, your amendment? You, uh, I take it you've spoken on the amendment? Yes. Councillor Hamilton? Yep, okay. Are there any speakers on the amendment moved? Hay, Hamilton. Councillor Veitch.
Councillors. I don't support this, uh, amendment because, as I said, we all have different views about January twenty six and its meaning and the events held. We hold a lot of events on January twenty six and the community does like them. However, I have to say is that we're getting declining numbers and less than half of the very small amount of people who were permitted to, uh, become citizens on Australia Day, simply beyond January twenty sixth this year. Simply because we can't actually accommodate that many. And we had less than half of that small amount of people attending. And so we should look at alternatives. And as I said, also, the, uh, feedback from the, uh, community service awards recipients was that they were disappointed that they were not able to invite more guests because there's just not enough room, because we're trying to cram everything in to a single event, uh, on a busy day. And I believe we could do better service and have more people because, uh, we, more people at both the citizenship ceremony, which could literally be held the night before. You know, so it would be practically the same. You could hold it on the night of the twenty fifth as a standalone citizenship ceremony. And have all the usual numbers. You could have like, probably ten times the amount of people that you have on January twenty six. And then you could also have a large standalone event on whatever day, either within that three days or it could be on New South Wales Volunteers Day, Week or, or whichever day. And again, you could have a big standalone event, probably in the evening when more people can come. Uh, they can invite friends and family and other community members and we could make it a big thing. But, but as it stands, because we have so many different things happening on January twenty six, this event is not very long, not many people can come. And it's worth considering alternatives. And to get a report back again, we did have a report back in the last term, but we're in a new term now. We've got a new council, even though there's obviously many of us who, who have returned, but we've got new councillors, it's a new term. And it's worth revisiting this, given, uh, the actual attendance and feedback based on this year's event. And that is absolutely, the staff did an amazing job. It was a beautiful ceremony. The centre looked beautiful. It was done wonderfully, but I think people were just voting with their feet. And I think it's time, uh, that we considered alternatives. So I would urge you not to support the amendment, uh, put forward by Hay and Hamilton.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor Luxford, then I'll go to councillor Burst, then councillor Sed on the amendment.
So I want to speak in favour of the amendment. Um, I support that these events should, Australia Day citizenships are important to quite a few people. They, uh, feel it a privilege to receive their citizenship on Australia Day. My own neighbour who is, was American and fiercely so surprised all of us when she took her citizenship on Australia Day after being in the country for more than twenty years and becoming an Australian. We never thought she would do it because she was fiercely proud of her American citizenship. But elected to do it on Australia Day. There, uh, I spoke to staff, um, after the event this year oh, on Australia Day this year, and there was some talk that follow-up wasn't done and that this year perhaps they would do follow-up prior to the event to ensure that people were or were not coming, so that if there were other people who wanted to be part of the event but maybe missed out because of numbers could then be slotted in. So, um, I would like to hope that we would do some such thing like that this year and in future years and continue with the status quo.
Thank you. I had a hand up from councillor Burst, then councillor Sed.
I will be supporting this motion. I stand here today. I have my Australian flag and I wear it all the time because I'm actually proud to be an Australian and proud to have an Australian flag and proud to have Australia Day on the twenty sixth of January. As for, as for the day not being, uh, losing its relevance, well, because we had a lot of backup, we had a backlog, uh, citizenship ceremonies, we cleared a lot of the backlog. So there was no, there wasn't that much of a backlog left to do on Australia Day. If we plan that right, we won't have that problem. I attend all the citizenship ceremonies. I think in my, since I've been on council, I think I've missed three citizenship ceremonies across over three years. So I'm proud to go to every one of them. I see the smiles on people's faces. And, uh, when they become Australian citizens, they, the, the joy in their faces is just something to behold. Um, now they've gone through a lot of time, they spent a lot of money, they spent years becoming Australian citizens. Everybody says Australia's a bad place, we're racist, we're all these things. But everybody wants to come here because they love the place. So it can't be that bad. We do a great job. And the council does a great job in running these citizenship ceremonies. And I'll tell you, I've gone to over seventy or eighty citizenship ceremonies now. And I love it, Australia Day citizenships. They are a highlight of my councillor calendar. I, I mark them in first before I do anything else. So I will be supporting this amendment.
Councillor Sed.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Actually, I won't support the amendment, but I actually agree with councillor Veitch because virtually everything she said was pretty much correct from last year. The, my only, and as she said, she doesn't want it to be changed this year, all she's asking for is review for next year, which I totally believe in. And I understand it because for the people who were there last year, and as she said, there was probably only twelve people were nominated and I think five turned up. Um, it actually took a bit of the gloss off the whole day. Bayside had it and they had about a hundred and twenty people in their town hall. If we could do something like that, I'd be all for it on Australia Day. All I'm saying is I'm not trying to move Australia Day, as councillor Veitch is not trying to move Australia Day. But we have had people say that the community service awards probably would be better off in Volunteer Week. And that's when other councils do it and it's actually well-attended. Last year, according to the volunteers, uh, the community service people who won awards are only allowed to bring one or two people. It wasn't a very sort of big occasion with a robust, it should have been. So I'm only agreeing with this as in maybe we need to look at it. Either we do it better or we move it to a night. As councillor Burst said, we've been on nights where there's been hundreds of people and they're all having a great time and it'd be great to do it two or three nights. If beforehand, as long as people get to actually attend, um, and we can have about a hundred people celebrating, it'd be fantastic. Um, my only fear is if it's, again, like it was, uh, this year, and I'm willing to see what happens this year. As you said, you're not trying to change this year. So see what happens this year. And then I agree with you, maybe we should bring back a report and start to think about other ways. That was the whole idea of my, uh, uh, motion about the life-saving. We're trying to think outside the square and trying to do something a little bit different. Have more people involved. We are a coastal council, so maybe people more, more get involved in Australia Day, involving the lifesavers, et cetera. So I agree with you, maybe we need to look at different ways of getting more people involved and make it a real celebration. Um, so I won't support the amendment.
Councillor D'Souza.
Mister Mayor. As a product of multiculturalism and the son of a simple printer and a teacher, we came across the seas to a wonderful land, a land of opportunity. A land that gave us all those values and freedoms we were looking for. If, if, if offered us democracy, if it offered us opportunity. But most importantly, it allowed us to dream, the Australian dream. The Australian dream, and we're talking about Australia Day. I know there's an elephant in the room and no one's mentioned it and I won't be the first to do it. Why some people consider the twenty sixth of January a taboo? But to those of us that have come across the sea and are proud to be Australians, who longed to be Australians, who are given the opportunity to be Australians, I say Australia Day is very meaningful. Now, there are people who argued, yes, we can have the citizenship ceremony. But having the award ceremony may not work. Those people weren't allowed to bring them. As we know, on Australia Day, many awards will be given out. The O A Ms will come out. The other people who have made a difference, the Australian of the Year will come out. All these people that have made a difference to making this a better country will be rewarded. Why then shouldn't our own residents, who have contributed to making the quality of life in Randwick City better? Who have contributed to that sense of community that we boast about? Why then shouldn't they also be rewarded on Australia Day? Mister Mayor, there's an old saying, if it don't, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. This isn't broken. This is not broken. There's nothing to fix. Let's let sleeping dogs lie. Let us celebrate all those things that we are so proud of on Australia Day. And one of those is the achievement of our residents. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers on the amendment moved, uh, Hay, Hamilton, I'll now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against?
No.
I declare the amendment lost. There's been a request for a division. Uh, all those in favour, please raise your hand. We have councillor Hamilton, Hay, Rosenfeld, Luxford, Martin and Burst. All those against? We have councillor Wellington, Magna, Veitch, Gordon, Asgari, Wilson, Sed, D'Souza and the mayor. I declare the amendment lost. We now return. Yeah, we return to the substantive, uh, motion, uh, which was moved by councillor Veitch. Um, are there any further speakers on the motion moved, uh, by councillor Veitch on, as per the business paper? No, 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 no. It's councillor Veitch's. Yeah, so councillor, uh, Hamilton wishes to speak.
I think the, the biggest problem that we have with Australia Day staying on January twenty six is the constant, persistent annual jabs at the day. Leave the day alone, make people feel comforted and comfortable in the day being the day. And maybe we wouldn't have people shying away from the, uh, award ceremonies and the citizenship ceremonies. Maybe those people would feel confident that when they attend the Australia Day Citizenship Ceremony on twenty sixth of January, they walk out of the room with no judgment. But because we have certain people in the community that keep raising it as a, a day that should be maybe changed and that it's loaded with all these other things, that it might scare people away. Which is really sad because they've come to the country, they want to be here, they want to be a citizen here and they want to partake in all the things that make Australia Australia, and this is one of them. This is a day that normally we would get out, I mean, my kids, we've got the little Australia Day, you know, little Australia flag tattoos and we've got photos and we do the full dress up because that's how we raised our children. And there are a lot of people in this world that want to be able to do the same thing. Go to a country that is as free as ours, that is as embracing as ours and put on a blue, red and white, they want to have the flags, they want to be able to dress up, they want to be able to relax and enjoy, enjoy the day as it was intended to be enjoyed. As we were raised to enjoy it ourselves. So we're robbing people the op- from the opportunity to just freely and comfortably partake in this day of celebration. And it's because every year there are certain councillors, certain people bringing up, should we, shouldn't we? Just think, it's flawed. It, it doesn't represent the majority of the people that live in this country. The majority of the people that come to this country who want to, as I said, celebrate all the things that are Australian. And it's daggy and it's awkward and it's funny and it's, you know, bogus. All these things that, that represent the, the really, the comical and fun side of us that we just love. That's why people come here, because we don't take ourselves too seriously. And this day is about having fun. Just ridiculous.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the motion as moved by councillor Veitch? Councillor Luxford? Uh, just before I go, were there any further speaker? Okay, question, councillor Lux.
Um, in view of what I said in the last little bit of debate, um, through to the relevant officer. Um, will we ensure this year and in future years, whenever, that perhaps a follow-up is done to see who is and who isn't coming intending to, um, come on the day so that others may, um, fill in the gaps or whatever? Because I did have the conversation, I think, with, um, Kaia, Kaia. And, um, there seemed to be a little bit of a glitch and the follow-ups weren't particularly done. Um, probably everyone was too busy and she said that this, they would ensure it to be done in the future. So can we have that assurance that perhaps, you know, this is followed through?
Through to the Director of Community and Culture.
Thank you through you, Mister Mayor. Yes, councillor Luxford, we will ensure that we follow up with, um, citizens through the Department of Immigration.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the motion as moved by councillor Veitch? Okay, councillor Veitch, do you wish to close the debate? Okay. Alright, I'll now put it. All those, there's been a request for a division. We'll go straight to a division. All those in favour of the motion as moved by councillor Veitch? Okay, we have councillor Wellington, councillor Magna, councillor Veitch, councillor Gordon, councillor Wilson, councillor Sed and the mayor. All those against? Uh, councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor, um, Rosenfeld, councillor Martin, councillor Asgari, councillor Burst and councillor D'Souza. I declare the motion lost, I believe. Yeah, it is lost. Uh, there being no motion in front of us, um, is someone seeking to move anything? No. Okay, okay. What I will do is I will afford councillor Hay the ability to outline what it is he would like to do.
Move it as per the business paper.
Councillor Hay?
Um, I reserve my own speak, uh, I wouldn't be repeating myself.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I will now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against?
No, division.
Okay, there has been a request for a division. Um, uh, okay. Uh, all those in favour of the recommendation on the business paper, please raise your hand. Okay, okay. All those against? Uh, no, I, I, okay, I'm gonna do that again because lots of hands didn't move and some people voted twice. Okay, all those in favour of the recommendation on the business paper? Okay, we have councillor Hamel- Okay, we have councillor Hamilton, councillor Magna, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Gordon. Councillor um Rosenfeld, councillor Martin, councillor Asgari. Councillor Sed, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor. All those against, we have councillor Wellington. Councillor Veatch and councillor Wilson. I declare the motion carried. Okay, thank you. The next challenged item which we have is C O fifty two slash twenty four, twenty twenty three to twenty four annual report. And twenty twenty one to twenty four state of the city report challenged by councillor Veatch.
Uh, I'll be moving the recommendation on the business paper. I would like to thank all the staff for the work they've done uh over this past twelve months. And uh yeah, there's been a lot of uh achievements, a lot of, you know, great things happening and so thank you to all involved.
Sorry, seconded by councillor D'Souza. So can I just confirm, just wait for one second. Um, on the advice of the general manager, we will, I I'd like to propose a brief two-minute adjournment. If that's all right, good, good toilet break. So we'll just have a brief adjournment and then we'll return to that. Thank you. Councillors, this is your one minute warning. Twenty second call. Okay. Uh, thank you. We now return at ten seventeen P M. Thank you, uh, thank you. Councillor Hamilton, you have the call. No? Councillor Hay, you have the call.
Thank you. Um, I'm advised that there may have been a technical problem with the way we moved C C twenty seven, so I'd like to reopen that, please.
Yep, sorry, thank you. We'll just return to that. Do you mind if I throw to the general manager just to give a brief explanation of what we're doing just for the whole meeting? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And councillors, with your indulgence, if we just go back to C C twenty seven twenty four. Um, the Australia Day celebrations, and my apologies for not picking this up during the the finalisation of the debate. Um, during the, during the debate, um, councillor Veatch um moved the motion. Um, and then uh then subsequent to that, councillor Hay then moved an amendment. The amendment that councillor Hay moved was actually the recommendation on the business paper. There was a vote taken on that and that that vote was that um, the amendment was defeated. We then went to the motion of councillor Veatch and that sub- that subsequent motion was defeated. There was then a a foreshadowed motion from councillor Hay, which was in actual fact the same recommendation again. As one recommend, as as a motion has already been defeated in the form of that amendment. We, you can't, council can't do that, so administratively, that's an error for us to to do that on the business paper, how that would look, um, which is not correct. So may I suggest that under clause seventeen fifteen, you can recommit an item. Back to council, if there's some error that's been that's been caused, I suggest that we do that. And that give you the ability to um make it, make a change to the current recommendation, that's your intention to do that.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to recommit this item under clause seventeen fifteen, and I will read that later. Um, I'd like to um go as per the business paper with the new point D. Uh, council uh staff uh follow-up, uh sorry, council staff analyse ways to ensure. Higher numbers of attendance at the. I I prefer my wording, uh.
Councillor Hay is the mover of the motion, so councillor Hay, firstly, councillor Hay has the leave of the chair to recommit the motion. Please continue, councillor Hay. Uninterrupted.
Uh, council s- uh staff, uh, analyse ways to ensure higher numbers of attendance. At the Australia Day ceremony at the Prince Henry Centre.
Is there a second? Councillor Burst was very quick, councillor Burst, um. Are there any further speakers? There being no further. Oh, okay, is there a second? Councillor Hamilton is the second. Councillor Hamilton, do you wish to speak to it? No, okay, thank you.
Just, is there a substantive debate?
No, there's, there's actually, yeah, there's, there's a hand up from councillor Veatch, councillor Veatch and then I've got a councillor Rosenfeld.
Is it possible for me to move the same amendment that I did before? Is that permitted?
No, the same thing would happen.
Thank you. Just a procedural motion that we put the uh uh this particular item, this motion, please. Okay, okay. Just let's make it easy. There is a procedural motion which to put the recommittal immediately. Moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded councillor Hamilton, it being a procedural motion to put it. I will then um go straight to a vote. All those in favour of putting it? All those against? I declare that carried. Okay, councillor Hay is the mover of the motion. Do you wish to reply? Okay, there's no debate to reply to. Thank you. I'll now put it, all those in. There's been a request straight through division. We'll now get all those in favour. All those against? Oh, sorry, my. Let's do it again. All those in favour, please raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Magna, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Gordon. Councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Martin, councillor Asgari, councillor Wilson. Councillor Sed, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor, all those against? All, all, no, all those against. Yes, all those against, I have councillor Wellington and councillor Veatch. I declare it carried. Thank you. Thank you for everyone's. With the indulgence of the meeting, yes.
Just how does it appear in the minutes?
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. What will appear in the minutes is there'll be councillor Veatch's motion. There'll then be an amendment from councillor Hay. That amendment was defeated. Uh, there was councillor Veatch's motion was then defeated. There was a foreshadowed motion from councillor Hay, which was then successful.
Through councillor Sid. Councillor Sid, could you turn on your microphone, please?
If it's a foreshadowed motion, I'm not trying to be smart. If it's a foreshadowed motion, you can't add D, can you? Cause it goes back to the original motion.
Through through to the director, sorry, through to the general manager.
Can, now councillors, you can foreshadow a motion if something gets, if something gets beat, you're saying then I'm gonna bring this motion. Or you have the option to to bring a foreshadowed amendment.
Thank, thank, let's move on. Okay, thank you councillors. Um, all right, we now move to uh C O fifty two slash twenty four. Twenty twenty three annual report and twenty twenty one to twenty four stated city report challenged by councillor Veatch. No? No, no, no. The councillor Veatch, twenty twenty three to twenty four annual report, twenty one. No, I think it was interrupted. We, 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 we ju- yeah, it could, could we? Can I get some advice from the general manager in relation to it? We were discussing the the recommittal.
Thank, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Veatch started this, uh, started talking about this particular motion. And then during that talk, I advised the mayor of my concern. The mayor said, can we stop the debate on that, have a two-minute break? We came back, recommitted it and now we're back on this item.
Thank you, councillor Veatch, could you please?
Um, I'm moving the recommendation as per the business paper. I would like to express my sincere thanks to all the staff for all their very hard work. Uh, over this past twelve months. Uh, and uh acknowledge everything lovely that we, that they did and uh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, seconded by councillor D'Souza. Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried, thank you. The 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 next challenged item I have is C O fifty six slash twenty four. Councillor Conduct uh and Meeting Practices, challenged by councillor Veatch.
Uh, thank you. I've sent through some amendments to Mr Kelly. Um, I just have a couple of concerns. I think largely the submission is very good. Um, there's a couple of things uh that I have concerns about that I would like to include in our submission. Um. I guess I have pretty severe concerns, councillors, uh. I think people are aware that, um. Being on council as an elected councillor involves a signi- significant amount of often very challenging work. Uh. uh, for which you receive a stipend. But councillors willingly, you know, people willingly put themselves forward. Uh, but, you know, I think if people, uh, were, you know, at the risk of getting a code of conduct complaint, potentially having to pay very high costs, be subject to a fine. Um, uh, for the mayor to have, um, you know, the power to remove a councillor allowance for a month or, or longer, or for any length of time. I just think that really goes a step too far. Um, I think it will potentially really discourage people from running for office. Uh, at, at Randwick, you know, the mayorship lasts for two years or one year. But in, in some councils, obviously a mayorship may run for four years. Uh, and, uh, in the event that they're, you know, and, and there are sort of, uh, checks and balances in terms of how everyone conducts themselves. But I just think, uh, the change has been proposed by the Office of Local Government. You know, I think there are concerns and I think, uh, our submission should reflect this. So I would urge you to support these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor Sedd. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you. C O fifty eight slash twenty four monthly financial report. Uh, as at thirty one October twenty twenty four, challenged by councillor Burst.
I'd like to move it as per the business paper, but I do have a question through to the rel. I do have a question through the relevant officer. Um, on page two twenty, income statement. Um, under the application of funds, um, we've got our assets acquired. And from the original budget of forty two million, we're now at eighty eight point eight million. So I'm just wondering what's driven that, that adjustment? And, um, and if, if I get some details on what the items are or what the item is.
Through to the chief financial officer.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The movement from the original budget to the current budget represents, uh, the carryovers from the twenty, twenty three, twenty four period, um, which was resolved by council in July twenty twenty four. The, the major area of that, um, which consists of around twenty five million is, is building works.
Questions councillor Burst, councillor Hamilton is the seconder? Okay, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. I'll now put it. All those in favour? Those against, declare that carried. Uh, C O sixty slash twenty four, update on the acquisition of forty nine Cusco Street South Coogee, challenged by councillor Hamilton?
I just wanted to congratulate the staff and just, um, express how well I believe this entire process has, um, has progressed. I think that we are very, um, honoured in Randwick to have residents that would, um, bequeath a property. It's, it's amazing that someone would, um, assign a property to the council and say, you know, we would, we're happy to, to allow you to use it for public purposes. It's, it's pretty incredible. And it's, you know, it will drastically change the coastal walkway. And it will make it a lot better, so.
Thank you.
Oh, you did? Okay. It's not typed up on the screen. I can't see.
Sorry, councillor, I have councillor Hamilton speaking, then I've got a councillor Martin as the, as the seconder.
Okay, great. Um, yes, and while the, the property itself, I, you know, as I've mentioned this before in council, the family that moved there, the, the father, the grandfather, he built the house himself. And the family lived there until, um, Ellen Wall passed away ninety nine. And so it's a very significant, uh, they are a, a family that have really impacted the area. Ellen Wall was on the Randwick District Historical Society for a very long time and was a great mentor to me, helping me write a book about the sculptor who, um, created the Captain Cook statue. So I'm really, I, I'm really overjoyed at the fact that we're able to retain this little piece of history and, um, and utilize it in a way where many, many people from within the area and from outside the area are able to enjoy it. And just, I'd like to see, you know, a plaque put on the, on the site. I'd like to see it recognised, um, truly for the, the great contribution to Randwick that, um, this family has given. But the fact that this property, um, is, will retain so that the land. Thank you.
Councillor Martin is the seconder. I'll then go to councillor Magna.
Uh, I've just, uh, yes, I am, but only just to concur with what councillor Hamilton has said. I think it's a great acquisition. And, um, it's going to be only good things for that Coogee Walkway. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Magna, then I'll go to councillor Rosenfeld.
Very briefly, when I saw this in the business papers, I was so excited. I've shared it with so many of my, um, friends and acquaintances that have regularly done the, uh, walk to Marubra and been disappointed when you get past the crypto castle and you have to make the schlep up to, uh, Malabar Road. So the prospect of being able to, uh, dive down into Luline Bay is a, um, an exciting one for, for, um, my family and many of my friends. And I'm happy to support the motion by Hamilton and Martin. And I commend the council officers for having the foresight, uh, to put the, um, the first right of refusal on the property.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Oh, councillor Rosenfeld.
Fully supported and very excited. And also will be even more excited once we get the boardwalk over Luline Bay, um, which I know we're working on, uh, because then we'll truly join the great suburbs of Coogee and Marubra, uh, to be nice and close to each other.
Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Uh, we now move to N M eighty five slash twenty four, notice of motion from councillor D'Souza, recycling of used clothes and textiles. Councillor D'Souza, do I have a seconder? Seconded, seconded by councillor Magna. Councillor D'Souza.
Friends, only fifteen percent of used textiles are theoretically recycled. With up to half of that amount shipped overseas, where the materials often end up in landfills anyway, due to less advanced waste management systems. Since the nineteen nineties, consumer behaviour has shifted towards shopping for new clothes frequently. But as consumers purchase more clothing more frequently, that means textile waste ends up in landfills faster. Well, may you ask, what happens to old clothes and textiles when they go to landfill? During the decomposition process, textiles generate greenhouse methane gas and leach toxic chemicals and dies into the groundwater and our soil. Over one point four billion units of new clothing come onto the Australian market each year. And over two hundred thousand tonnes of clothing end up in landfills around Australia. It's time we did more to decrease our carbon footprint and save our planet. That is why I have brought this notice of motion to council. Finally, some more facts and figures. In twenty twenty three, seventeen million tonnes of textile waste ended up in landfills, according to the data from the Environmental Protection Agency. According to the World Resources Institute, it takes two thousand seven hundred litres of water to make one cotton shirt. Textiles can take up to two hundred plus years to decompose in landfills. Friends, we have to move forward on this. It's a motion. You know, we, we talk about that principle of intergenerational equity. To quote it, and I'm sure all of us are aware of it, we have a duty of care to present the world we live in in the same condition, if not a better condition, to the next generation. That is what we have to do. Now, this is a great way to do it. Do, because it helps decrease our carbon footprint, it helps building a better world. And more importantly, I wear recycled clothing. Mr Mayor, one day I said to him, Mr Mayor, that's a beautiful tie. He said, I got it at the Salvos. And I said, well, I'll be going there and I have. And believe me, there's nothing wrong in buying secondhand clothing or recycled clothing. Not only are you doing a, a, a good community deed, but also you're saving our planet. So I hope you all support this notice of motion. It is very meaningful. But more importantly, you're doing it for the next generation, not just for the present one.
Thank you. I'll go to councillor Magna as the seconder and then councillor Luxford.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. I rise to support the motion by councillor D'Souza. I, I'm proud of some of the work that Randwick Council is already doing. The Saturday Circle, the recycling initiative, it's the work of the Sustainability Hub, um, is to be commended, but, uh, we need to do more. Um, and we should always be pushing to look for alternative pathways for reuse, um, and sustainability and closing the loop. Uh, and I, I, when I saw this motion in the council papers, I, um, reached out to councillor D'Souza and lent him my support. I, I know the sustainability officer does. I, I know the sustainability officer does brilliant work, uh, already. And I'm sure they will welcome this invitation to look for further charitable opportunities, um, further pathways that we can divert, um, fast fashion and fabrics that, um, as councillor D'Souza has highlighted, um, contribute up to ten percent of global carbon emissions, um, and we need to do more. And I think this motion will be an important and meaningful step for this council to make a contribution, um, on this front. Commend the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Luxford.
Yeah, just a question through to the relevant officers here. I believe we've already had this motion. Um, and I think it was councillor Chapel that actually moved it. So what happened to the original motion that she moved? Where are we up to? And because this is almost identical to the previous motion that we've already voted on. So I didn't think we could bring the same motion in prox, close proximity to a council meeting.
There's a question through to the general manager.
Mr Mayor, um, councillor Chase, I don't know where that's up to, but I'll follow that up and get a response to you.
So then how can we vote on this if we already have a motion sitting there pending to be acted on or whatever happens?
Okay, through, sorry, through, sorry, thank you. There's a question through to the general manager.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Um, the minus thing is not the same motion, but I said I'll take advice and I'll check for you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sedd.
Throw some light on it, Mr Mayor. It virtually was asking, councillor Chapels was asking for a report on exactly the same things, um, and she actually did mention the Saturday Circle because she was a big believer in it. She asked for a report and the actual report came back and we voted on the report. So it should be actually, it's actually happening now. Um, but I'll let the general manager bring it back, but I can tell you that it came back to council and we voted on it, um, as per the recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Burst.
I'm all for recycling, um, but recycling notices of motion is not, is not one of my big things. Um, N M forty six twenty three, um, through the relevant officer, that is the motion we're talking about. Uh, the gist of it is pretty much the same, so, um, uh, we shouldn't be wasting councillors, councillors' time. Uh, they should be able to get on with doing other things. Um, so, uh, the officer prepares a report on what we can, what can be done to reduce textile waste in Randwick, including consideration repair and mending workshops, available textile recycling, pro, uh, programs for residents and education about environmental and social impacts of fast, um, fashion and sending fabric to landfill. So it's all about reducing landfill and recycling. Um, so we're pretty much, we're, we're just rehashing, we're recycling and I'll notice the motion. Thank you.
Uh, there's a question from councillor Hamilton.
My question's actually to the mover. So does the mover believe that Randwick Council are not doing enough? When we just heard that there was a notice of motion, which was almost identical to this. So that, this is my genuine question. Do you believe that the council are not doing enough?
Um, a, a question has been asked to councillor D'Souza. Councillor D'Souza?
These comments are unnecessary. If we really care about our community and our environment, we should do everything we can to buttress, to support and to do something about it with these comments as, oh, it's been.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza will be heard in silence. Thank you.
These comments.
But actually, point of order, Mayor. Um, so I did ask a question through the mover and I did say that my que, question was genuine in relation to a motion of almost identical nature. And councillor D'Souza has gone into debate rather than answer my question. Because I really, I'm actually asking a proper question where I'm, I'm checking in with the mover. Is, does the mover believe that the council are not doing enough, even though we've already had this come to council and it's been actioned by council? So are, are council staff not doing enough and it necessitates an additional motion? Identical to one that's already been resolved?
Um, in ruling on said point of order, um, councillor Hamilton did ask a question to councillor D'Souza. Councillor D'Souza is free to reply to said question, as is every director who I re, refer a question to in the manner in which they see fit. Councillor D'Souza, if you see, would like to continue with your answer to councillor Hamilton's question, feel free.
Would have been answered if I was given the opportunity. I was just adding context to it. That's all, Mr Mayor. Context. So let's get back to this, these questions, these absurd accusations that this has been done before. What are we saying? Can we not do better? Can we not do better? Can we not do more? Can we not do better to improve ourselves? If this has been debated before, yes. Where is the outcome? Where is the result?
Uh, councillor D'Souza will be heard in silence. Thank you.
I can see the bitterness and anger of this councillor and the frustration even. But in saying that there should be no, we're talking about our environment. We're talking about the future of our children. We're not just talking about councillor D'Souza and that's not on debate here. But coming back, Mr Mayor, to the question that was asked, can council do better? We can always do better. That's what makes human beings, human beings. We are doing well. And we continue, but we can improve ourselves. With regards recycling, as those that know my work with the Salvation Army, I have seen at first hand those that are homeless, those that are needy, those that are most vulnerable in society, those that go without because of selfish people. Well, I'm trying to change that. I'm trying to make things better for all of us, Mr Mayor. It's not about Noel D'Souza. Why are we pinning this and saying, oh, it's been done before? I'm saying, I'm bringing to the attention, I'm bringing to a surface, a problem that commu, community and society has to address. I'm talking about sharing the wealth of our country. I'm sharing in this crisis we have, how we can make things better for all. If it's been done before, man landed on the moon not just once, but I think it was four or five times after that. Does that mean that the other four missions didn't count? If they have a reason for doing it, if they can make things better, if they lead to change, do it again and again and again. Remember the three hours. Reuse, reduce and recycle. If this motion's recycled well and truly, if it needs to be reused and brought to the attention of others, let's do it. Let's not reduce its importance and relevance.
Point of order, um.
Is it a point of order?
Um, councillor Hamilton is not in her seat. Uh, the, uh, speaker isn't being heard in silence. Um, and, uh, I'd ask, um, also, uh, yeah.
Thank, thank you. Look, a similar point of order, a similar point, thank you, I'll rule on the point of order. Similar point of order was raised earlier in the evening and I upheld said point of order. Councillors will remain in their seats. Thank you. Thank you. No, that, that wasn't the point of order. Okay, coun, councillors, th, th, thank you, thank you. We would like to continue the debate in, in relation to that. Okay, ca, ca, councillor, councillor Hamilton? Yeah, thank you. There was a raised point, point of. Yeah, th- thank you, there was a raised point, point of, there was a hand up from councillor Luxford. And then there was a hand up from councillor Wellington, councillor Luxford.
Um, it was seen that our esteemed councillor D'Souza isn't, can't accept facts here. And is all about self-promotion through this recycled, uh, motion. And I take offence that he's actually saying that more can be done. And that our council staff, who have worked quite hard on the previous motion. And delivered us a report which was put into place. He is, you know, I take offence on behalf of our council staff that he's saying they are not doing enough. Um, the report came through, it's all been, being, it's factual. We know that there was a motion.
Councillor Luxford, there is a point of order. Councillor D'Souza.
Know the rules and the rules that you can't impute, you know, what a councillor's saying or his moves. I have never, and Mister Brownley and others will confirm, I love the staff. I would never say anything that is.
Councillors, councillors, councillors. Councillor D'Souza is speaking in relation to a point of order. Councillor Hamilton can't then subsequently call one. Councillor D'Souza, please continue as outlining.
To impute what the councillor has said. I have never said anything poor about our staff. I would never say anything disrespectful about our staff. I think disrespect has been shown towards me by others in this room, all because, not the issue. But the person, remember in football, Mister Mayor, we were taught, play the ball, not the person. I say that again today, play the ball, not the person.
Councillors, what I will do is give you a general reminder in relation to the conduct in which we treat all councillors.
Are you calling a point of order on us?
I'm chairing the meeting, councillor Hamilton. And couns- thank, thank you councillor Hamilton. I- in relation to the meeting, one of the core responsibilities is to maintain order. And what I can clearly say is that there is an extent of disorderly conduct as it relates from councillors in relation to this. What I will remind all councillors is that councils will be heard in silence, that councils will also treat each other with respect. Councillor Luxford, if you would like to continue remarks.
So, um, in view of the fact that there has already been a report that we have received and voted on. Uh, I take offence that it should be a suggestion that council officers could do more. I think our council officers have done adequately in, more than enough. They work extremely hard and overloading them with more and more reports on things that have already been reported on. Is just a waste of time when they could be directing their, their precious time. And their great efforts to other, um, issues.
Thank you.
I absolutely put.
And I would like to move an amendment to remove point B.
Councillor Luxford is moving, hold on, I just want to get some advice in relation to it. She was mid remarks and then she said that she wants to do it. He's jumped up and moved a procedural motion in relation to that. So she still had the call. Yeah, look, councillor Luxford had the call in relation to that, so she has the ability to move, um. An amendment, councillor Luxford, could you please outline what it is that you're moving?
So I would like to, um, move the, um, the motion. Uh, uh, and with, uh, amending by removing point B. So point A, council acknowledges the actions currently undertaken, blah, 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 whatever, and no point B.
Okay, sh- uh, you sh- the general manager said, no point two. Uh, what I'll ask, it being an amendment, councillor D'Souza, do you accept the amendment?
I think point one, sorry, in, in one covers the essence of what I'm trying to do. The sentiment of what I'm to do, I'm trying to do. The rest just adds meaning and context. And, and encourages us to get, do more. There's nothing wrong, it's, I'm saying investigate how we can do more. That's what human beings do. We have inquisitive minds, Mister Mayor, that's why we've evolved. And that's why humanity has moved forward through investigation and improvement. But if the small-minded people feel that we should leave things as they are, well, yes, let's go, let's stay as we are. We'll never dream the dream. But in saying that, your question was, do I accept it? No, now I won't accept it. Because when I think about it, it's wrong. It's wrong to not help, be able to help those that are most in need. It's wrong how we should not improve the world for our children. It's wrong why we don't take the prin- little principle of intergenerational equity. All these, these, these principles are the, the foundation on which we, we've improved ourselves. So, uh, look, I, I'll say no on that. I won't accept.
Councillor, the seconder of the amendment is councillor Hamilton, I believe. Yes, councillor Hamilton.
Thank you. I think that what we've heard tonight is that council staff are doing all they can. We have heard a motion almost identical to this. It was, um, it was voted by the majority of councillors at the time. And when we did debate that previous motion, we did talk about how all of us were definitely in favour of recycling efforts. And doing what we could to reduce landfill. So I think that there was absolutely a unanimous, um, sentiment. In favour of clothing and textiles initiatives to try and reduce, um, landfill. And what we're sort of seeing here is a repeat of that. And we do know that the council staff did a report. And they presented that report back to us. And when that report was ca- uh, came back to us, we were all very happy with the work that the council had done. We also felt that the council had gone above and beyond to research on our behalf and on the residents' behalf. Measures that could be taken to educate all residents in reducing their waste. And reducing, um, you know, our throwaways that feel, that get into landfill. So I did feel as though that the previous, um, council in the previous term, the motion was very, um, well put. It was supported by the majority of councillors, uh, probably unanimously. And then the staff did the work and brought the report back. So I felt like that was really good. What, what I'm seeing here is a repeat of that. And what I would like to try and avoid in a new term. Is for us to make council do, do rework. So go back and, back to the drawing board. And, uh, undertake a, a n- number of measures, basically doing the same thing they've already done. And I think that that's really unfair on them. And I don't believe that it will add that much more to residents' understanding and education. Because we already have done it. So I think that what councillor Luxford is proposing in an amendment really does. Still, uh, inform all of us, new councillors and new term, that there are all of the measures. That are currently being taken place. So well done to councillor D'Souza for listing them. And councillor Luxford is saying, this is what we should be, uh, moving. To ensure that it's very clear what council currently do. So I hope that you support the amendment.
Okay, just in relation to that, I'm just seeking advice from the general manager as to the process that I'm required to follow at this point. Okay, the advice is that there has been, i- is it the case that the request to put it, or? No, 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 well, no, no, the question is, is there a councillor who is moving a procedural motion which I'm bound to follow? Okay, councillor Burst is moving the procedural motion to put it. All those in favour of pu- is secondarist councillor Martin, all those in favour of putting the amendment, please say aye. All those against? I declare it carried. Okay, the amend- the amendment now, now we now move straight to the vote on the amendment. All those in favour of the amendment moved Luxford Hamilton. No, no, we have to, we have to put it. And it, it, it doesn't matter, Danny, I don't have a choice. Which is why I asked multiple times if they still intended to ram it through. Okay, so. The motion moved Luxford Hamilton is now in front of us, the, sorry, the amendment moved Luxford Hamilton. Is in front of us. All those in favour? All those against? No. I declare that lost. Okay, there's been a request for a division. All those in favour of Luxford Hamilton, please raise your hand. Okay, we have councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford, councillor Rosenfeld. Councillor Martin, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, all those against. We have councillor Wellington, Magna, Veitch, Gordon, Asgari, Wilson and D'Souza and the mayor. I declare the amendment lost. We now return to the substantive motion as moved by councillor, uh. D'Souza, I had a hand up from councillor Wellington. Councillor Wellington. Councillor Wellington, then I've got councillor Sedd.
Um, I, I'd just like to say it's more a point of observation that the.
Ca- councillor Wellington will be heard in silence. Thank you.
The, 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 the field of recycling is a fast-moving field with very many evolving technologies. And that not all textiles are created equal. Um, I believe that the, in the background information, um. Uh, councillor D'Souza makes some reference to Port Stephens Council partnering with a company called Block Text. And this was about, um, the recycling particularly of, um, uh, bed linen. Uh, that when you recycle bed linen especially, it can be reduced to fibre. That can be remade into new fibre in order to make new textiles. It's a very sophisticated technology. I don't know, and I would like to, um, ask a question. So through you, Mister Mayor, to the relevant officer, it may need to be taken on notice. Whether any of our recycling of textiles in Randwick City Council actually goes to this level of recycling. Which is a very sophisticated and important part of the circular economy. And I think it's probably what councillor D'Souza was getting at, but it's become rather lost in the debate.
Thank you. Through to the relevant officer.
Three, Mister Mayor, councillor Wellington. As far as I understand, we don't go to that level of detail at this stage. But of course, we are now moving to circular economy and waste. And this will be part of that programme of seeing how we can expand in relation to recycle and reuse of, of materials.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the motion as moved, D'Souza, Magna? Councillor Sedd.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I was just trying to, sort of try to, um, answer everyone's questions. Because, um, on the thirtieth of April, business paper, and I'm quite, I'm surprised by my use of the hub. And I found this quite quickly. Uh, city planning report, C P twenty slash twenty four, reducing textile waste in Randwick L G A. The executive summary goes through everything we just discussed, the purpose and the discussion, circular economy, et cetera, et cetera. And then the relevant feedback from relevant experts. We've gone S S Rock, that's textile storing group, Centre of Excellence Sustainable Fashion. Planet Ark Australian Circular Economy Hub, Nina Gore, A B C's War on Presenter. We are doing, this is what we're doing in our workshops, Randwick Recycling Centre, ongoing since two thousand nineteen, Recycle Smart. Textile bins in multiple dwellings, clothes swap parties, South textile, national clothes swap event, textile mending. And then it goes on with all the other initiatives that we're doing. It's a very comprehensive report. And all I was trying to say was that it was answered, um, there's resourcing strategies. Even we're paying Recycle Smart House Side Collectors eighty four thousand a year, so we're even putting a lot of money towards it. We're doing the best we can. Um, this report, that's what I was trying to talk about, point B, we're doing exactly the same report, we'll come back. And if I was a council officer, I'd just recycle this report because it's only since April, so it's only about four or five months old. So, um, I just want to help out council officers. It's all there, it's already been done. They can, if, if this goes through, they might as well just give us back the same report. Thank you.
Councillor Magna?
Uh, question to the general manager through you, uh, Mister Mayor, um. Uh, general manager, could you clarify whether or not this motion is the same as previous motions? That have been moved by this council.
Through to the general manager.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, councillors, a, a couple of comments, um. It is very, very similar to the motions we've had before. The change in this motion is it talks about partnering with local charities. I don't think we actually had that in the, in the last, um, one. Um, that, um, that we responded, uh, as councillor Sedd just said, the report responded comprehensively. It was about the circular economy and most of the things that are in this report. I think the difference is that.
Thank you. Now proceed your motion, put the motion please. Okay, there is a procedural, yep, there is a procedural motion, motion that it be put. We will then go seconded by councillor, I think, Sedd. Uh, all those in favour of putting the motion? All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, councillor D'Souza, do you wish to reply? Okay, uh, councillor D'Souza has requested, uh, a division. Um, all those in favour of councillor, the motion has moved, D'Souza, Magna, please raise your hand. We have councillor Wellington, Magna, uh, Hay. Okay, we have councillor Wellington, Willin- Wellington, Magna, Veitch, Hay, Gordon, Rosenfeld. Martin, Asgari, Wilson, Sedd, Burst, D'Souza and the mayor, all those against? We have councillor Luxford. Okay, declare the motion carried. Thank you. All right, we. Okay, thank you. Um, we now move to N M eighty six slash twenty four, notice of motion from councillor Veitch. Support for nurses and midwives, councillor Magna. All right, thank you. Um, councillor, um, councillor Veitch.
Uh, thank you. Uh, look, uh, councillors, I will take this as read. We heard from the, uh, wonderful speaker tonight. Um, uh, Miss Charlie Hurst, uh, who's a nurse at the Children's Hospital, um. Look, I think nurses and midwives have really reached, um, a limit. We've seen that reflected in the huge, uh, uh, rallies and strikes, um, over the past year. And in the previous year, um, you know, commitments were made, uh, during Covid. You know, where it was recognised that count, you know, nurses and midwives have gone bea- above and beyond. They were out there serving our community even before vaccines were developed. And putting their lives and, and health at risk. Uh, we have seen, uh, pay increases. Uh, delivered to paramedics, to teachers and more recently to the police force. And it's time that we upheld our commitment and, uh, also delivered this much-needed pay increase. To the nurses who we all, uh, respect and, and love. And as was, uh, noted tonight. Um, we all find ourselves, or I love once supporting loved ones, or ourselves having to, to, uh, you know. Unfortunately be ke- cared for by nurses at some point in our lives. So I urge you to support the motion. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, councillor Sedd.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I think it's a, it's a, I support the motion and I actually, um, quite happy to, to second this. Because, um, I think we have a lot of people, a lot of nurses and midwives in our L G A and they deserve our. And that we won't be having a lot of nurses and midwives in our L G A because the cost of living will price them out. I was talking to a whole heap of, um, and there's a lot of them, Irish nurses who just can't live in the area anymore. Um, and even the nurses that, uh, sort of grew up here, as the, our speaker said, they have to move out. So I think they deserve, they deserve to get what they get, uh, the pay rise they are asking for. And it continues on with the, the long-held establishment of, unfortunately for industries that have a lot of women in there. Like childcare, aged care, retail, um, nurses and midwives, primary school teachers, hospitality. They're always underpaid and it's a shame that when women fight for extra pay, it seems to go under the radar. But, uh, in male-dominated industries and, you know, I, I really think the police deserve what they can get. But because that's a lot of males in there, they sort of got it straight away. So I just feel that, um. The nurses and midwives deserve everything they can get and this is a good way of showing our solidarity to the nurses and midwives. Um, we should respect them more and they should get paid for what we, what they do.
Thank you. Just as there's some doubt as to whether or not the personal interest declarations have been tabled yet. I will just make a discretionary disclosure, non-significant, non-procurnary. I'm an employee of the New South Wales Government in the New South Wales Attorney General's Office. However, as my employment does not relate in any sub. does not relate in any substantive way in relation to this, I will be voting in the matter. Um, thank you. Um, are there any further speakers? Uh councillor Burst?
I'd like to, I'd like to propose amendment to this motion. Point six, after Marjorie O'Neill M P, we've put a comma, plus the member for Maroobra, Michael Daly M P, as he is the member for Maroobra, which takes in a large component of the of the uh rate payers of Randwick City Council. So I think it's important he's there, um. And that's, and that's it. I think that's, oh, where is it? It's in there? I can't see it yet.
Yeah, no problem.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Oh, reuse, recycle.
Yes.
Uh, I accept it, that's fine.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Uh councillor Hamilton.
Could we just have a look at, I think it's point one or two, if we scroll up? Uh, point one. So in point one, uh home to the second largest hospital campus in New South Wales and includes the major public hospitals. And I would like to put an amendment that the private hospital is included as well. I mean, nurses work there too. And I think that all nurses should should be able to get and midwives should be able to get this pay rise. So, because it's only listing public, major public hospitals, Prince Wales, Royal Hospital for Women, Sydney Children's Hospital. No, separate, separate um award. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just think it was, um, I just don't know that they're covered by that award. That's the only reason. Like, they're public sector, so they would be paid by different. They wouldn't be paid by the state government, they would be paid by, directly by the hospital. Does that make sense? Yeah, otherwise I would have been happy to, but they, it won't apply to them. Because they're not, they're not public servants, it's a private hospital. Yeah, so. Okay, so I'll just, I'll attract that given the information that I've just been um provided and hope, you know, and believe that it's, it would be accurate. Uh what I would say to this is, um, you know, it's about time that the Labor State Government did something for nurses. They like to stand on polling booths with uh volunteers in nurse or uh, you know, medical scrubs handing out for them. But when it comes to the crunch, they don't actually deliver on a lot of the promises. So I'm in favour of this because it is about time that they delivered. And I know that, um, you know, there have been a lot of protests in the city, the nurses coming out and saying, i- it's phenomenal. I mean, it can't even mind-boggling to to realise that they just haven't had a pay rise. And yet, they're the ones that bring life into the world and wipe up stuff and clean up after us and keep us alive and and nurse us back to health. And yet, state government, Labor State Government, haven't done it. As I said, they like to see them, you know, standing side by side with them and handing out um during all elections. So why haven't they done this? How long have the Labor State Government been in power in New South Wales? And they still haven't done it. So I absolutely, um, you know, endorse this and I think that this is great that councillor Veitch has put it up.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Veitch, do you wish to close the debate? No, I'll put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Alrighty, um. A very patient member of the gallery. N M eighty seven to twenty four, notice of motion from councillor Veitch safeguarding native vegetation and bushland uh sites in the Randwick Local Government area. Councillor Veitch. Seconded by councillor D'Souza.
Uh, thank you Mister Mayor. Uh councillors, uh once again, I will take this as read and we heard from uh Miss Kerry Gordon who spoke uh very eloquently and with a lot of uh passion, um. There was genuine, uh, you know, people were genuinely upset when the, when this happened. Um, I think it is a chance to uh look at how we can consult with our local community and particularly the bush care volunteers uh before we get the contractors in. Um, it's possible that that may, there may have been an opportunity to, for them to uh conduct this work uh along with uh perhaps some council staff, rather than getting in contractors who may not be aware of all of the sensitivities of these sites. So, um, you know, and also the the current plan of management for this area uh is well out of date. We can review it.
Please continue.
So I hope, I hope you can support this motion.
Councillor D'Souza is the second.
All right, but I'm fully supporting it, very good.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the motion? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. N M eighty. Uh, could we get councillor Magna? Is councillor Magna still waiting outside? Or did he step out? Yeah. All right, we will continue. But um. N M eighty eight slash twenty four, notice of motion from councillor Wilson. Amendments to the terms of reference for the Arts and Cultural Advisory, moved councillor Wilson, seconded councillor Luxford.
Uh, this um, this committee, the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee, uh has been uh running, I think it was, I think it was uh started in the last term of council, wasn't it? And councillor Veitch. Possibly, oh, well, I I've been, I was, I served on this committee in the last term. Councillor Veitch was the chair. And she's done a marvellous job in bringing a lot of people um to the table uh to the, uh for the purposes of consultation, it's been very helpful. Uh, we have had quite a lot of feedback. I was the uh a member of that committee. Um, we had quite a lot of feedback from uh members of the committee, councillors and council officers that the, there's a lot of people on the committee and it's um a little bit unwieldy. It's um hard to get everybody there. Um, and it's hard to, um, uh, it's hard to monitor exactly which um which branches of the arts are being represented. And so the idea of the of the motion is to cap the number of um of members of the committee that are uh sourced from the community and that they represent particular um branches of the arts. Uh, so that we don't end up getting large numbers of um particular kinds of artists, not not that there's anything necessarily wrong with that, but it's, we just need to get a a balance, I believe. Um, and we're, I'm adding that last dot point um to introduce the idea of getting uh music teachers, dance teachers, drama teachers. Because um onto the committee, because um we haven't had any, because it wasn't specifically um, wasn't specifically uh referenced. And uh I think as we're trying to support small business in the area, we're trying to support um the night time, night time economy, we're trying to um support young people, um. This is the idea of the motion. And uh I I commend the motion to you and I seek your support.
Councillor Luxford had actually moved to second it, but I'll go to councillor D'Souza afterwards.
Um, yeah, I support this uh motion brought uh brought to us by councillor Wilson. I too serve on that committee and um at times have found it a cast of thousands in the room where the mea- the meeting doesn't always seem to achieve a real purpose. People are invited to come without even being, um, you, no one knows and more people turn up um to these meetings, um, and we don't, as the motion says, we don't seem to know who comes from what part of the arts and who's representing what and what these people actually do. Um, we are all in support of culture and the arts, um, and I commend that we will have Aboriginal uh arts culture representative on our committee. Uh, because that is totally important to the preservation of what what we have around in our area. But I think we need to limit this committee to people who are really committed, who will turn up and who represent various um parts of art and culture and not having ten people all from the one part and nobody representing perhaps another. So I commend uh the motion.
Thank you. Uh, I had a hand up from councillor D'Souza? Nope, councillor Veitch.
Uh, thank you. Look, I'm happy to support this. I I'd just like to give a little bit of context based on some of the comments that have been made. Um, I did a lot of work back the beginning of the previous term in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen to try, this this committee had not met for a very long time, uh. To get it back started again. I had a lot of support at the time from uh Theresa Mock, uh and also Seema Trivaa, but particularly uh Theresa Mock, uh who we did a lot of work to to get this going again. Um, also Gary Ella did some work on it also. And uh and then the main purpose of the committee at that time was to develop our arts and cultural strategy. And that was the specific main purpose at that time. However, um, at that point in time, the membership was very small. It was mandated, I think, from memory of perhaps being only about four community members. And so it meant that if on one particular night, a couple of people couldn't show up because of other commitments, you literally just had barely any community members. And so it was uh decided to um actually increase the number to ensure that we had an active committee uh and a greater representation. So I think this number is is quite fine. Um, but that was the rationale before increasing the number. It's hard to get committees right, to get the number right and uh people are all working and have families. And so, uh, yeah, but I'm looking forward to being on this committee again. And there's, there's plenty to do and I'm sure uh it will be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers. Uh councillor Wilson, do you wish to close the debate? Thank you, I'll now put it. All those in favour? Those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. We now move to uh N M eighty nine slash twenty four, notice of motion from councillor Rosenfeld for the activation of Broad Arrow Reserve for overflow parking. Moved councillor Rosenfeld, seconded. Seconded councillor Hamilton, councillor Rosenfeld.
Okay, um, as as obviously the returning councils will will recall, a year ago, uh we um had a report come back after I I requested such a report on the activation of overflow parking from um November to March on all weekends of basically Saturday and Sunday and public holidays. Um, uh basically forty three percent of people were in favour of some form of parking, thirty four percent of those were in favour of that particular uh activation. Um, it 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 wasn't recommended to go ahead and I I then uh challenged that. But when I challenged that, I basically said I'm happy to pare it back to just December to February, it's only the 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 summer months and only Sundays and public holidays. Um, and I also added a a point when I did that about the um uh only being done uh when uh the the weather forecast uh 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 basically said it'll be, you know, fine weather and there'll be large beach activation, uh beach beach visitation. And the um uh the web, the council will put that on the website. It was defeated. And uh last summer, I did receive a lot of complaints that uh um that, yeah, uh, a lot of issues with parking, uh a lot of people having uh parking in their driveway. So all the old same issues. So now we've got a new new council, um I'm bringing it back. Um, I'm basically um asking for a report from uh uh the Director of City Services and I spoke to him, um, I've asked him to, if we can do it in uh the December meeting, given the fact that we're just about into summer, he said he he can do it. And also the funding can come from, there is money, um, Todd confirmed to me from the twenty four, twenty five operational plan. So, um, there, you know, I'd like to see this happen to to basically help the community. I, as I said a year ago, I agree that a lot of people are in favour and but and I agree that a lot of people against. It's a it's a uh polarising issue, but there are a lot of people in favour. So, uh, I ask for your support.
Councillor Hamilton is the second.
Thank you. Yes, I um, I fully support councillor Rosenfeld with this. And one of the things that I'm I'm looking at, I have a couple of questions a- as well, but one of the things that I'm looking at is point D, where notice will be provided, um, you know, the preceding Wednesday and Thursday. My question is, could we use a um notification system similar to what we do with the parks? So what I'm referring to is all the sports parks, they're open until council know that there's too much rain and they have to close them. So could we use a similar notification system?
Through to the relevant officer.
Through yourself Mister Mayor. The notification system for sports fields, um, as it's currently implemented, um, is an email notification to key stakeholders um of the afternoon of um the the status. So whether they're open or closed. Um, and then subsequent to that email to the to the stakeholders, um, the council's website is updated. Um, I would say in the event of um the Broad Arrow Parking, it would more than likely a notification uh would be to uh the website, I'm not knowing um the details of of the residents in the area.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense. I I imagine we have access and contact with all the sports clubs, so that's fine. So I think that if people are planning on coming into the area, knowing that, you know, we do know that, you know, seven day weather forecast, so they do know it's going to be a hot day, make their plans and then they should be then looking at the website, making sure that it stays open. And if it's shut, we would then jump on the website. All staff would jump on the website and say, there's just been too much rain during the week and it won't be open on that day. Is that something sort of we'd be looking at then?
Through to the relevant officer.
Through yourself Mister Mayor, Paul, just could you just clarify the 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 question?
Yeah, sorry. So just considering that in agreement that it would be a different process, but it would be advertised on the webpage. So if there was a week of just torrential rain and we knew that Sunday was not going to be suitable for overflow parking, no matter how much people wanted to come to the beach on that day, then would we, would we then advertise it on the website on the Wednesday or Thursday before? We would say it's closed. Don't come on Sunday because the overflow car park is closed. Or you can come, but you know.
Through, through to the director of city services?
Um, through yo- yourself Mister Mayor, uh, I would say that would would be the case if it's, if the decision of council is to um make the notification relation to the weather patterns. Um, I just would note to council, um, in in the previous report that did come back, we did note the staffing implications of opening the um the the car park and uh should we be required to, uh, we would require a notice period or to engage staff to 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 man the beaches on the weekend.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that, given the fact that this motion's not asking for it to be open constantly, but knowing that we have a huge problem on a really hot day and we have cars just doing laps and laps and laps, which is not what we want because we want cars to just get to their destination, park, turn the engines off because it's environmentally better than running a car and running around the streets, um, you know, multiple laps. So I I think this is very reasonable. That, I don't believe that this is something that would um reduce the the reserve to anything other than what it currently is. And that is, it's the overflow, it's the overflow for, there's markets on there. At the moment, there's massive machinery, drilling huge holes, heading out to the ocean to to bring cables so that we can have internet. Um, so this is something that is, I believe, uh quite easily supported. So I hope that everyone does support it.
Thank you. I saw a hand up. Actually, I think I saw councillor Gordon and I've got a councillor Veitch. Councillor Gordon. Thank you, I saw a hand up, I actually, I think I saw councillor Gordon and I'll go to councillor Veach, councillor Gordon.
Yeah, look, I just can't support this proposal. I mean, we know that there's not a lot of parking at Maruba Beach. This is true for any of our beaches. We have very popular beaches. During summer, you can watch them fill up and have people snake down the streets, of course, for for kilometres, which will only get worse with the addition of extra overflow parking. Look, if anyone's been to Broad Arrow Reserve, you know that turf is barely hanging on. Uh, we have Maruba Beach Markets regularly there and that tears up the ground enough as it is. I think we just need to draw a bright line and say. No more overflow parking only during special events, that is as pretty much as much as we can afford. And the fact is, is that most people don't actually want it. Um, the consultation that you've cited here, forty three percent are in favour. That means fifty seven percent are not in favour, and you can impu- impugn all you want about whether people have. Whether people have um said a certain way because they thought mistakenly that it was going to be paved, regardless, that's the outcome of the consultation, which is what I'm gonna follow. Um, so if you don't want Broad Arrow Broad Arrow Reserve to be renamed Broad Arrow Dirt Patch, um then support, don't support this proposal.
Okay, thank you. I have, I had councillor Veach, then I had councillor Burst, so I had councillor Veach. Councillor Burst, then councillor Luxford, councillor Veach.
Uh, thank you, yeah, I I will not be supporting this motion. I mean, there's a there's a couple of reasons, one is, uh. As councillor Gordon mentioned, uh it will turn into a dust bowl. We've seen that happen because we used to have the overflow car park down at South Maruba. Um, that was large, which used to be grass. There's the one that was there and then behind it was a grassy one that was largely just opened in summer. And it was dirt. It used to be grass and it became dirt. And it just stayed dirt for the whole year. It's not like the grass ever really recovered and and grew back. So we've actually seen what happens already when you turn a grassy area into an overflow car park. It can't cope. Essentially, the whole area underneath is just sand and so the grass will be destroyed and it will cost a lot of money. To to re-turf it, a hell of a lot of money, we don't know how much. The other thing is, is that if anyone would be very well aware that most of the other beaches uh in Sydney. Have paid car parking, they've got parking meters. We're the only council that doesn't have parking meters except for a few there, uh in Coogee. That is why, that is just one of the reasons, other than the fact we've got amazing beaches, they're also very popular because they've got free parking. So there's, will just actually attract even more people, it is not going to solve the problem. And it's going to destroy the amenity of that park, which is very popular with local residents who like to go and walk their dogs there, kids like to play there. Um, you know, summer continues on and we'll have kids from uh Saint Mary's and Joseph's wanting to go and play sport there. And use it as a playground and it will be a dust bowl. So there's no logic behind this motion. Uh, it's, we've already had uh the consultation on this and the community has spoken, let's respect. The voice of the community who do not want this and I urge you not to support this motion.
Thank you, procedural motion to extend the meeting for one hour, all those in favour, move councillor D'So- councillor Gordon D'Souza, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carry. Thank you, I declare that carry. Um, I then had councillor Burst.
Uh, my question is actually through to the proposer of the motion. Um, it's about overflow, now. Did we seek advice from South Maruba Surf Club and Maruba Surf Club? And did they indicate that they would be supportive of it because they would need that space so parents could park there, the drop off their nippers? For nippers on those Sunday mornings, um was that one of the reasons why you supported opening up Broad Arrow?
Uh, thanks, councillor Burst, definitely South Maruba, a hundred percent, um and I I actually spoke to um. Paul Founds, AKA Stress Today on it, um Maruba Surf Club, I haven't, um, uh they could be supportive, but I haven't actually had. Conversations uh with them on that, uh in specifically, uh but certainly South Maruba.
Effectively, um if we don't have that overflow potentially with the extra crowds. We may may not be able to get nippers down there for their um Sunday uh surf club services, that would be disgraceful if we if we weren't supportive of that.
That's true. Um, councillor Luxford.
Yeah. Um, I'm support, I fully support this motion, um I've always been in the view. Going way back to even when my dad was on council, that something should be done with Broad Arrow Reserve. In the way of either camper van parking, parking, et cetera, for a fee. Um, going way back, you know, Broad Arrow Reserve. Has never had grass on it in my recollection and my whole entire life of spending my time at Maruba Beach. In fact, the circus used to come every year to Broad Arrow Reserve until councillor Mattson banned it. So, um, it's never really had grass, it's never really had anything that is any sort of amenity. Other than walking your dog on it, um because quite frankly, it's brown grass, you get prickles in your bum. So, um, no one has ever picnicked on it, now we are running markets. On part of it, which, and you know, the market is churning everything up. Um, so I'm fully in support of this becoming an overflow car park and I think councillor Veach raised. Pa- paid parking at other cup, uh other beaches. They have a big, huge area and I believe they're raking it in there at Bondi, Manoli paid, I don't know how much the other day. To go to Bondi for two hours, he could have had a nice lunch for that money. Um, imagine if we had those parking meters at Maruba and we whacked them into Broad Arrow Reserve. We'd be on a winner.
Thank you, they're being, uh. You ca- you, okay, you you can ask a question, yes.
Sorry, could I ask a question through to the relative, through relevant officer, whether Arthur Byrne Reserve is currently available for Nippers overflow parking?
Thank you, through to the relevant officer.
Thank you, through yourself, Mister Mayor, um I can confirm that uh Broad Arrow. Uh, reserve is um available for the surf clubs um on on their special events and and requests, which um do include. Uh, Nippers Carnivals.
Thank you. Uh, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, councillor Rosenfeld, do you wish to close the debate? No, okay, thank you, I'll now, we can go to a division, that's fine, there's been a request for a division. All those in favour of the motion is moved by councillor Rosenfeld, please raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Hay, councillor Luxford. Councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Martin, councillor Sedd, councillor Burst, all those against. Councillor Wellington, councillor Magna, councillor Veach, councillor Gordon, councillor Askari, councillor Wilson. Councillor D'Souza and the mayor, I declare the motion lost. Okay, thank you. N M ninety slash twenty four, notice of motion from councillor Rosenfeld combating antisemitic graffiti, moved councillor. Rosenfeld, seconded councillor Magna, councillor Rosenfeld.
Okay, um, um, I've had a lot of reports of antisemitic graffiti, uh mainly in the last thirteen months. Uh, all around the L G A and um recently I saw that uh uh mayor Will Nemech in. Waverley Council had a mayoral minute in the in their October ordinary meeting, um. More or less saying that um um, you know, that, uh, I I, um, that um they wanted to combat antisemitic graffiti. And they wanted to put some measures in place and I I spoke to uh Will, uh Mayor Nemech. Uh, and I praised him for it and I said, look, Randwick, we have very similar issues and I'd like to um. Uh, basically, uh, put something similar in place, so it more or less goes along with the um, with what Waverley are, so. Uh, that we um um, we do um continue to um. Uh, yeah, to to basically to register all these incidents and pass them on to Jewish border deputies and the other. Uh, pa- uh parties I mentioned on there, as well as bring back a report on um. Um, what measures we can uh do to combat it, including C C T V, so I ask for your support. Uh, the Jewish community is be- feels very confronted on this issue. Um, and um, you know, it's it's a very, it's a very emotional topic with the Jewish community, so please support.
Thank you, councillor Magna is the seconder.
Uh, yes, I rise to support the resolution by councillor uh Rosenfeld, um. Let me very, be very clear, antisemitism has no place in our community, um. There has been an increase in antisemitic graffiti over the last thirteen months and it's a deliberate attempt to. Intimidate those um and terrorise Jewish residents who make up a significant. And very valued part of our community and this isn't about politics or what goes on um overseas. Um, this is about ensuring that all members of our community um feel safe um and included, uh. And respected and um aren't targeted because of their faith or because of their cultural identity. Um, and council has a very important part to play. I think that the measures that are proposed in this motion are practical. And reasonable and they've proven to be um suitably adapted and applied in adjoining council areas. Um, I think the documentation and the proposal in this motion. Uh, will give us an opportunity to see if there is any clear pattern of this antisocial behaviour. Um, multiculturalism is one of our incredible strengths of our our community. And this is something that is to be cherished, um but not something to be taken for granted and I commend the motion to the council.
Uh, I have a hand up from councillor Wellington. Could you turn your?
Turn it on, that would help.
Thank you.
Can I amend amend the emotion, the emotion? I will emotionally amend the emotion, um. It's late, um. I'd like to say that I completely, um. Support all members of our community faced with vilification and discrimination. I totally deplore um all forms of antisemitism, however, I would like to amend this uh um motion. In part because I don't feel that, um. That C C T V is going to make any difference to the behaviours, so um to keep it brief. Um, I'd like to propose in the amendment to um retain B. Remove A, C, D and E and replace A. With that council deploys all forms of threatening racist graffiti. Including antisemitic, Islamophobic and all forms of racist religious and cultural vilification. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. It being an amendment, I'm gonna call for a seconder? Is there a sec- seconded? Seconded by councillor Veach? I- is there a s- Okay, so so the the amendment, o- okay. Okay, um, the amendment, just so I can clarify for everyone, the amendment deletes point C and inserts a new point C and D. Just confirming that you seek to second it? Okay, uh councillor D'Souza is the seconder, I'll then go to councillor Hamilton. Okay, councillor Hamilton.
Um, what I what I would say is I don't support the amendment. I think that, um, what councillor Rosenfeld has done here and, you know, we did hear that. That, um, mayor Nemech, Will Nemech, he's an actual Jewish mayor, he is. Put, he's put this forward because of the increase in antisemitic behaviour, the increase. In violence, graffiti, uh we've seen shops burnt out. So what we're seeing is we're not seeing, um, the kind of behaviour at the beginning of. In October, October seven exactly last year, um after um Hamas, uh you know. Murdered and kidnapped, you know, multiple people, you know, thousands of people um from Israel. In a multi-pronged attack, uh attack against innocent civilians. After that, we saw a rise of um antisemitic behaviour. In the past twelve months, it's increased, so it hasn't abated at all, it has continued to escalate. And it's escalating to a level that we have needed the police's involvement more so. We have needed C C T V footage to capture the very person that's just been arrested. They would not have been arrested if it wasn't for C C T V footage capturing this person. And do you know why they captured this person so easily, this this gentleman from Mascot who tried to get on a plane to leave the country after spraying. Uh, disgusting um terms across and disgusting um sentiments across uh vor clues. Because this gentleman had a tattoo of a, um, a terrorist organisation on his neck. So without the C C T V footage capturing him, covered his face, but he had the tattoo on his neck. Which is, you know, highly identifiable, without that, he would not have been caught and he would have left the country. And he would have got away with these disgusting deplorable acts. And so we have a certain element in our society, which unfortunately they they reside here in Randwick and in the council here. That they continue to push a political position which jeopardises the safety. Of many residents in our L G A and in our neighbouring L G As. So because of their persistent, their dogged, uh you know, one-sided political view, pushing that. In social media, attending protests, attending rallies, uh promoting it all over the place. It is continued to to divide our community and make and ensure that. Jewish members of our community live in fear. So if we don't do something very serious about helping them. Not live in fear, about grabbing the people who, you know, arresting, finding, arresting and putting away the people. That are abusing them, that are threatening them, that are ruining their way of life, then what are we doing? So by watering this down and saying we don't need C C T V, well, we would not have got this gentleman that has just done all this damage in in our neighbouring L G A. Um, and if we don't ask officers to prepare a report on security assessments, that's our job as council. We ensure that every resident has security measures in place to help them. But we engage with the police all the time, this is our job. We engage with them and we ask them, okay, where are our hotspots, what should we be doing? And often, there's been uh uh many examples where councillors have brought forward motions. About antisocial behaviour due to alcohol intoxication or or, you know, drug taking. And then we've asked council to go speak to the police, um you know, liaise with them because they're the authorities on this and they're able to then. Uh, pull pull um resources into that area and they come up with some solutions for us. All councillor Rosenfeld is asking is to do exactly that. Get our staff to get out there and speak to the right people, speak to the authorities and ask them what more can we do? And if we don't do this now, when are we gonna do it? When somebody dies? When somebody is murdered in our streets because of somebody's political view or their religious belief. Then we have let everybody down, we have let our community down if we don't do something because it's, as I said at the start. It's not staying the same, it's escalating, so our response should be on top of that.
One minute extension, two minutes ex- two minute extension for councillor Hamilton.
So if if as, if as these incidences are repeated and repeated and repeated and they escalate. We saw a businesses, we've seen businesses that have had their windows smashed, we've seen one that has been burnt out. Uh, so there's an arson attack, what's gonna happen next? I'm really scared for our Jewish community, I speak to them quite regularly and they tell me that they're afraid. They tell me that this is uh the most unsafe situation that they've been in and this is the thing. This is the most unsafe environment that the Jewish community have had in Australia. Since the war, so in all that time, they've succeeded, they've been embraced, we've had, uh you know. The whole community come together and embrace all cultures and embrace all religions and we have a very tolerant. And quite beautiful society. It is now completely broken, we have a huge rift. And I believe that if we don't do something serious about trying to mend that rift or. Try to do all we can to keep that community safe, then we are not doing our jobs. We are letting them down, so we need to match the escalation of violence, discrimination. With all the powers that we have in our ability. With all the powers that we have in our ability. And that's exactly what this motion is doing.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendments? Sorry, councillor Veach, councillor Veach.
Uh, well, that, that was quite an interesting speech. Um, I rise in support of this amendment. Um. Council already removes graffiti. We have a policy to remove graffiti, it's done promptly, it's done swiftly and effectively. Any member of the community who sees graffiti of any kind can simply call council and get it removed. That is already happening. Anyone who notices, um, any type of, uh, graffiti that may be antisemitic or. Or racist or anything like that will likely already be reporting it to the police. Um. If we need CCTV cameras, in all honesty, it should not be about preventing graffiti. It should be. Perhaps in areas where, for example, women, and we know that eighty-five women have been murdered already this year. Unfortunately, many of those by intimate or former partners, but. Uh, it is women who come to me, uh, and feel unsafe in some of our streets. You know, where we could improve lighting as a start. We can't even get CCTV cameras in. Uh, for rubbish dumping hotspots. So I think it will be, uh, impractical. To, to try and work out areas, uh. To preemptively, uh, prevent some type of graffiti. We have many businesses, uh, schools, places of worship and so on already have CCTV cameras. In any case, but, I mean, I think. There are many people in this area who actually feel very strongly about the conflict in the Middle East. It's wrong to assume, uh, that this is a one-sided affair. People feel very strongly, uh, they're not going out, uh, they may go to rallies, they may not. Uh, but I've had many people come to me, they're certainly not going out, uh, threatening people, making people feel unsafe. Um, or, or spraying graffiti everywhere. These are just regular members of our community. Uh, many of whom actually are Lebanese or have relatives in Lebanon, you know. Well over forty thousand people have been, uh, killed in Palestine. Uh, over fourteen thousand of those are children. I see, uh, videos in my newsfeed every day of dead children, people with. Kids with multiple amputations. It's horrifying. And now we're seeing thousands, uh, killed in Lebanon. It's got nothing to do with bringing back the hostages. So feelings are high, that is correct. But we need to support all members of our community. I didn't see anyone here, uh, standing up when a, a bomb was placed. Uh, on someone's car, uh, in, in Botany, uh, last year. Or earlier this year, whenever it was, and so. We see the councillor coming back every other meeting, trying to stir up discontent. Uh, in this council chamber, in this community and claiming people, uh, are making.
C- councillor Veach, c- could I just caution you to keep your comments directly to the motion where possible? Thank you.
So, um, I support the amendment, it's appropriate. Council has already, uh, on a number of occasions. Reaffirmed, uh, our condemnation of. Uh, any type of antisemitism, Islamophobia or racism. Um, that is appropriate and I support the amendment very strongly. Thank you.
Uh, councillor De Souza.
I heard the councillor, I was going to sit and listen. What's it like to be a Jew in Australia?
Sorry, sorry.
But you're not even allowing me to speak. You jump in, you jump in before I even open my mouth.
Be allowed to be heard in silence. All councillors will be heard in silence. Councillor De Souza, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I asked, what's it like to be a Jew in twenty twenty-four Australia? Believe me, you can't wear your kippur, you can't show your Star of David, you can't show your prayer, Shaw. All these things, in, in no other religion, and I'm a practicing Christian. I can go to church, I can have my Bible in my hand and walk across the street and no one will touch me. No one will spray paint my car. But if you're a Jew. You cannot wear your kippur, you can't show your Star of David, you can't let anyone see your, uh, if you're a school child, you have to hide your uniform. Now you talk about graffiti. Believe me, you don't have to write on our cars, you've written in our souls. You've hurt the Jewish community because of the way Jews have been treated for years and years and years. And what have we asked for? We have just asked for safety. That's enough. That is all we've asked for, an opportunity to live. And be live a free Democrat and practise our faith. But coming back to the, the motion, yes. Graffiti is an issue. Yes. Graffiti, we have a wonderful, you talk about staff, we have a wonderful graffiti team led by a man called James Benjamin. He, as soon as he gets the phone call, he addresses the concern. But the problem here is that. The TV, the newspaper, the media ha- have created a bit of a storm and people are reacting. And sadly. Now you don't even hear the stories anymore about this, what is occurring in the Middle East. And I can see the frustration. That's stemming from that, where people are saying, I'm gonna have to do something myself. Politicians' offices are now spray painted. Other things are occurring which are un-Australian. And we need to do something about it. But I did, and I must really in the end will support councillor. Rosenfeld's motion, but I support Claire's motion at the moment because what she talks about. Addressing the concerns, but at the same, I saw councillor Willington's motion, uh, but. It also talks about protecting, you know, identity, privacy, all those issues which are just as important. I'll just leave it at that, Mr Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Councillor Burst.
Hmm. Firstly, comparing illegal rubbish dumping with, uh, religious violence is, is abhorrent. Um, also, we'll start with that.
Point of order, point of order.
Sorry, I, I will hear the point of order, I'll hear the point of order. Councillor Veach, could you please outline your point of order as to how it relates to the code of meeting practice?
Complete misrepresentation. There was no aligning. What I was saying is that we can't, we have not been able to get CCTV cameras. There was no intent clearly to align the two.
Thank, thank you.
Ask the councillor to withdraw.
Okay, no, 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 ju- just hold, hold on. Uh, uh, I, I can't identi- hold on, thank you. I can't identify where the code of meeting practice was breached in that particular regard. Councillor Burst has the ability to withdraw, that is a matter for him. Councillor Burst, do you wish to do so? Okay, ca- thank you. Councillor Burst, please continue.
Um. And looking at this amendment, it's a watered-down version. Um, we certainly, it doesn't look at security, it doesn't look at CCTVs. And so I'm disappointed that, uh, councillor De Souza would actually second this, uh, uh, watered-down amendment. Um, and then thirdly, my other question is, um, because of the issue we're talking about and in the interest of transparency. Uh, my question's to the mayor. Um, so what sneaky deal have you done? Are you doing with the greens, with the greens, with the greens for the membership in this term?
I have a point, councillor Burst, that's, look, in, in relation to, just ho- hold on, just in, just one second. In, in relation to that, your comments and questions need to be related to the substantive motion in relation to it. Um, uh, the, uh, there is no further that I need to add in relation to it other than what I can see as an attempt.
Answer the yes or no to doing a deal?
Beg your pardon? Look, anyway, thank you, let's move on. Councillor Burst, do you have any substantive remarks in relation to this?
Um, well, it was pretty substantive, I think, um, but that's, you know, I'm here to protect our community. At the moment, they're not being protected, not looked after. It's disappointing that we've got people in our community not looking after them.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay, with the leave of the meeting, I would like to just make some comments in relation to this. I do, I accept that it is unorthodox in relation to the chair in doing that. I clearly commend councillor Rosenfeld's, uh, motion in relation to this. Why oppose this particular amendment and support the wording as proposed by councillor, uh, Rosenfeld? Is because it clearly, uh, identifies the rise in antisemitic graffiti which is occurring across our, our community, um. It, it is my strong view that that, that is definitely the case. I have observed it with my own eyes. Uh, in relation to it, the, the increase of swastikas, um, and, and Nazi-related paraphernalia, but also. Uh, direct and targeted, um, attacks on Jews in relation to it as well as businesses in relation to that. Um, this is a common sense, the, the, the text of the motion, uh, as initially moved, which the amendment seeks to remove. Um, would, would substantially water that down in my regard because there is also the cooperation with, uh, a range of relevant, um, uh. Groups, the police, but also the Board of Deputies and the Special Envoy to Combat Antisemitism. Speaking broadly in relation to this, as elected officials, I think that we have at first and foremost a duty of care to our residents. Um, we have a diverse set of views across our, uh, LGA in relation to it. But very importantly, everyone has a right to be safe in who they are. Um, combating antisemitism is a clear task of all of us in relation to that. So I commend the motion as moved by councillor Rosenfeld. And do not support the amendment. Um, are there any further speakers on the amendment? Thank you. Well, now put it, all those in favour? All those against? I declare the amendment lost. We now move to the substantive debate. Councillor Hamilton actually, um, had your hand up to speak on the substantive debate before we move to an amendment. Do you wish to continue or you?
Uh, look, I, what I would say is, just, just to sort of wrap up the, um. The debate a little bit that we've heard. And I would say that I'm very disappointed to hear references to. Other groups and other individuals when we debate a, a, a particular item. And I say that because if this item that we had in front of us was. A different item, so let's say it was about domestic violence. And then someone stood up and they started to talk about. What's happening in another area or another issue. So they brought another item to the table to try to. You know, foster an argument. I think that's really flawed because you are opening up the floodgate. To allow any single issue to get, uh, watered down or pushed to insignificance. When you're trying to build it up and recognise it for the challenge and the problem and the issue that it is. So that's what I would say is, um, really dangerous, dangerous territory. If we're talking about an issue, we stick to the singular issue and we work as hard as we can as a group of people. Who are elected into this position to try to resolve or come up with options or ask the, the staff on council. To reach out to the relevant authorities and, and the relevant, um, you know, organisations and community groups. To come back to us with, with solutions and options. So if we then take that one singular issue and we bring in all these other issues and we do, try to do comparisons. And we try to say that that's not as good as this one, or we should be talking about this over this, that's flawed. That's, uh, very dangerous and very disrespectful.
Uh, thank you, councillor. Well, he, he, yes. Okay, are, are you gonna move it or councillor De Souza would you like to speak? So I. Okay, yeah, councillor De Souza, please go.
Mr Mayor, after, after you, your words of wisdom, I must say that I will be supporting councillor Rosenfeld's. Motion, that's all I'd like to say. It was implied by someone that he was surprised, I was taking a different stand. Wasn't that I was taking a different stand. The sentiment was there, but the, the, the council has to learn for reasons of debate. Motions have to be seconded, otherwise the message doesn't get through. So sometimes people second. A motion so that we can go into debate. Doesn't necessarily mean that they support what the speaker has said or the mover has moved.
Thank you, councillor Luxford, to ask you a question. I apologize you had, uh, prior gesture in order to do it.
Um, just here in point D, um, I guess this is a question through to the. Um. Through to the mover, or, uh, I'm not sure to who, but it says, it talks here about, um. Examining the suitability of installing additional. And or higher specification CCTV. I take councillor, um. Hamilton's point of, you know, if there weren't CCTV cameras in certain places, we wouldn't catch certain people. Um, but I'm wondering where exactly are these CCTV cameras that. He's talking about, where exactly we'd be installing them?
Through to the, is it through to the mover or to the relevant officer? Through to the mover.
Uh, basically, I'm asking for, uh, a report to come back, uh, to, um. To do that very thing, um, to examine the suitability of installing additional, uh, CCTV cam- cameras, so. Yes. So basically, yeah, yeah, it's a security assessment. So I'm asking for that report to come back, yeah. Uh, it, it's a security assessment, which is effectively an other type of report, yeah.
Thank you, councillor Lux.
Yeah, but a security assessment, where exactly in the whole of Ramwick City are we looking at? For, for this particular item. I mean, it's a big area and. Where are we putting the cap, where exactly, you know, how, what sort of security? Uh, report are we supposed to be getting? Are we talking around synagogues? Are we talking around shopping centres? Are we talking around? Schools? I'm not sure, like, where exactly?
Through, through the relevant officer, officer.
Okay, okay. I will refer the question through to the relevant officer to give their opinion as to what the intent of the motion would do.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, councillors, we'll, we'll consult with the local area commander and a member of the Jewish Board of Deputies.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Danny, would you like to move a process? There being no, no, okay. Sorry, my apologies. All those, ca- do you wish to close the debate?
No, thanks.
Thank you. All right, all those in favour? All those against? There has been a request for a division. Okay, all those in favour of the motion as moved by councillor Rosenfeld, please raise your hand. Councillor Hamilton, councillor Magna, councillor Hay, councillor Gordon. Councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Martin, councillor Wilson, councillor Sid. Councillor Burst, councillor De Souza and the mayor. I declare that carried. Thank you. We now.
Uh, put forward a procedural motion. I should have done this half an hour ago, but I thought I'd let it go, we're going quickly. Um, can we have two-minute speeches and also two for two against?
Okay, there's sec- seconded by councillor Burst, procedural motion, um, all those in favour? Those against? I declare that carried. Okay. We now move to N M ninety-one twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Asgari, pollution at Coogee Beach.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I make my motion in amendment four. And can I please ask Mr David Kelly to put them up?
They're gonna counsel to Susan, please continue. Please, please continue, councillor Asgari.
So. Um, can I please elaborate on their background before I continue and say why it's different to?
Councillor Asgari, please continue. They, they, please continue, they can deal with that.
Yeah, I just wanna elaborate on the background that how, how it is different to, um, councillor Caroline Martin last time. So I just briefly say on the fifteenth of October, thousands of black balls washed on, um, washed up onto Coogee Beach. Causing the beach to be closed to swimmers and also more sightings soon followed. At nearly, at nearby beaches, but Coogee Beach appeared to be the epicentre of the pollution event. As reported in Mayoral minute forty-nine slash twenty-four on October twenty-second. Initially, these walls were thought to be tall. Sydney has a number of deep ocean outfalls that release. Treated sewage, including of, uh, including one of, of Malaba and Coogee. Has stormwater. Has stormwater outlets that release sewage during heavy weather events. N M three slash seventeen at council meeting on twenty-eighth of February two thousand seventeen. Notes this and it is an ongoing issue. In the demarcation between stormwater and sewage, it is council that deals with issues related to stormwater. And Sydney Water and the New South Wales Government that deal with sewage. However, council has cleaned up the. Facial balls that appeared on Coogee Beach and its cost at its cost when it should be safe. And it should be a state responsibility to clean up the pollution. So council has a com- committee that has been working on it forever over two decades. But we all know that the solution are costly. So now we go to the amendments.
Uh, thank you. There's a procedural motion for a one-minute extension moved councillor Gordon, seconded councillor D'Souza, all those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Please continue.
So they are, they, Mister Kelly, are they on there, screen, the amendments? So, um, note that Mayoral minute fourteen hundred and twenty-four indicated that the pollution. Even on Coogee and other beaches in Randwick, L G A in fifteen. October was caused by tall balls. Notes on urgent business U B twelve slash twenty-four to write to the state. And federal government requesting an investigation into water quality at all Randwick because. Be, uh, Randwick beaches and a full, a full breakdown of the recent tall ball. Incidents. Note that investigation and testing of the material. Was undertaken by U N S W, E P A and Randwick Council, council staff and consultants. Note that Sydney Water has a number of deep ocean sewage outfalls.
Thank, thank you very much, councillor Asgari. The second of the motion, councillor D'Souza.
With regard, Mr Mayor, I just wanna say polluters and pollution is part of life, but what makes it so special? Is that we've got a team of workers who address these concerns immediately and. Last week and the weeks before, the perfect example. So, as I said, I commend the council for bringing this notice of motion. It's an important notice of motion, but when you've got, you know, uh, Superman's has Lex Luthor and everyone has some, a nemesis. In our case, polluters do have a nemesis and that's our wonderful team led by the Director of City Services. Thank you. As I said, in Randwick City, there's no room for polluters and we know how to take care of the pollution. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Martin.
Thank you. Uh, I would just like to move our amendment, please. Mister Kelly, if you could put that up. Um, we're talking about recycling and doubling up and tonight, and no disrespect to councillor Asgari, but, um. I would like to, uh, remove, um, items A to F and change, um. Add some points in that. A, note that the urgent business U B twelve twenty-four. Asked the council to write to the Labour, State and Federal Governments requesting investigation into the water quality of all Randwick beaches. responses have been received and would appear that further investigations are ongoing. And the second part of that urgent business requested was a full breakdown, a full breakdown of the incident. For it to be included in the annual state of beaches report, which will anticipate. We anticipate will be published in October twenty twenty-five, noting that this information missed the cutoff. For the twenty twenty report. And B, note in that debate of urgent business twelve twenty-four. The expectation of a full breakdown and report is that the source and the composition of material washed ashore. Would be determined and made available for council and all residents.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Seconded councillor Hamilton. Councillor Hamilton? Okay, councillor Asgari, do you accept the amendment which removes sections of yours and substitutes it with?
Yes, I do.
You do? Okay, you 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 she accepts it? Okay, is there any further speaker? Are there any further speakers on? The motion moved by Asgari, which has since been amended and accepted by her. There being no further speakers, uh, I'll now, do you wish to close the debate? Do you wish? Okay, thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. No, it was incorporated. Thank, thank, no, thank you, thank you. No, I'm now putting the motion. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you very much. We now move to N M ninety-two slash twenty-four. Notice of motion from councillor Wellington. Responsible investments within Randwick City Council's investment policy moved councillor Wellington, seconded by. Seconded by councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I will be brief. I'll take the motion as read, um, and briefly say. Um, the sound management of council finances is the foundation of everything we do. Randwick City Council is in a stable financial position. And this enables us to feel confident about the future prosperity of our local government area. Randwick's future depends on a sustainable economy both locally and globally. Consideration of environmental factors, social factors and governance factors in the management of resources. Is referred to as an E S G approach. And as we so eloquently heard, um, earlier this evening, uh, from the, um, member of the public who came to speak. In favour of the motion, um, Doctor Don, Don, Don Munro. The E S G approach provides greater transparency in an organisation's efforts towards sustainability. Puts sustainability, uh, the best practice environmental management at the centre of purchasing and provision of services and infrastructure. And provides a responsible and sustainable policy framework for the execution of all activities. Um, an E S G framework allows a considered appraisal of investments. That ensures good returns and the opportunity to invest in socially and environmentally beneficial alternatives. This approach to responsible ethical investment is described by the New South Wales Treasury Corporation, T Corp. And has been adopted by L G As including Waverley, City of Sydney and Inner West Councils. Under New South Wales legislation, council is bound to invest as a prudent individual might in managing their own funds. Many citizens of Randwick feel that the way we invest money reflects our values and aspirations. And in their private investing choose ethically, socially and environmentally beneficial alternatives. The principles of E S G approach are widely understood and practised in the Randwick community. And this motion is in accordance with a societal movement that is transitioning to responsible ethical investing. I note that their Randwick City Council investment policy is due for review by the twenty-eighth of February twenty twenty-five. Thank you.
D'Souza is the second. Uh, what more can? Uh, thank you. Uh, I actually have a hand up from councillor Hamilton. Then I'll go to councillor Hay, depending on what. Councillor Hamilton.
Thank you. I I I'm not gonna support this motion, um, and the reason is. That council have a fantastic track record when it comes to investments. We we're doing, uh. I think probably a standout job, and e- especially in comparison to a lot of other councils. So I'm also a member of Eric and so I am further aware of the measures that council take. And the and the efforts that they go to, to ensure that we're doing all the right things. So. I have full faith in their ability, but I just wanna read out a couple of challenges with E S Gs. So the few challenges, the, or there are some really s- strong challenges against, um, going down this path. Environmental degradation and social inequity. So. By by pursuing E S Gs above all others, it can grow, um, you know. A divide in society because we're really, we're pushing against, uh, the poor a lot more in in many ways. Um, lack of harmonisation. So that's something that when when we're talking about this, it confuses the market. And it confuses the, uh, our ability to speak to key market, uh, leaders and providers. Because we're just doing this big broad brush brush. And basically, it's like, you know, needle and haystack, um. Companies, particularly small businesses, may struggle to identify and implement best practices. So already, they're told. Do this, do that, don't do this, don't do that, do this more, stop doing that so much. And so they're already completely overwhelmed. The small businesses just fold. So we're gonna go and push this on to them and, you know, great, let's see more small businesses fail, which we don't wanna see. Shareholders and investors may not know where to access accurate and trustworthy information. Because the complexities around investments. I just one minute, um, the complexities around, um, investments, it it's so fraught with danger that. Pushing another set of factors that they have to meet will only lead to more strife. And so. I think that this is, um, a a po- a, uh, motion that didn't need to come up.
Thank you, uh, councillor Hay.
To fully understand why this motion needs to be voted down, I'll contend that the guest speaker was thoroughly incorrect. When he said that investing al- along E S G principles would avoid repeating investments that mimic the global financial crisis. In two thousand and six, the Greens Council and Wallara Council. Uh, moved a motion that called for environmentally sustainable investments. The motion passed. The Wallara Council as well as Liz Moore. And, uh, Winja Caraby invested a lot of money with a group called Lehman Brothers into. Uh, C D O's collateralized debt obligations. When the global financial crisis hit, those C D O's sold as environmentally sustainable. Worth nothing because they were soon determined to be junk bond bonds and Lehman Brothers went to liquidations. Local councils who invested in these junk bonds lost a ton of money. It did not matter that the junk bonds were sold as environmentally friendly. They were junk. I like, I'd like to stress, this is my first major point. Councils need to focus on their core strengths. Our our financial team has amazing accountants and auditors. We do not employ financial analysts. And we do not have people who follow the markets. Now, Randwick is one of the few councils that did not lose money on junk bonds in the G F C because of our financial management. And not entering into risky investments. In response, the local councils to. Local council losing a ton of money, the Office of Local Government issued, uh, Investment Policy Guideline twenty ten, three point four, said. A council's main objective in investing funds should be to preserve the capital, i.e. prevent the loss. To the amount invested while gaining the most advantageous rate of return with minimum risk. They then had ministerial investment orders in twenty eleven detailing what you could do. So my second point. Is that if we don't do this carefully, we are going to contravene the ministerial guidelines. See also in a business paper that was produced to us in May twenty-three. So.
Well, hold on. Thank you, thank you. There's a procedural motion to move a one-minute extension. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Please continue.
Okay, so.
One minute.
What is the classical model of finance? You look at long-term profitability and that already dictates whether or not. A a share price is a good investment and it is appropriately priced. If the company is doing something which is non-environmentally sustainable, it is already factored in. Now, as the E S G in particular in its current form. Is designed as a social credit system being built into it. Point three, my major point again. E S G needs to be drawn in contra- contrast to what has existed before it. It is designed to draw the focus away from the standard metrics like long-running probability and and put it elsewhere. Now. Um, how is E S G defined? Okay, I'll skip to point four. If E S G, uh, was an agreed process, it would. Re- produce consistent results. You cannot get a simple answer to a question like. Who is the biggest, uh, who, which company is the best at E S G in the world? And when you look at a company like Tesla, some organisations, uh, rate it incredibly highly, some rate it incredibly lowly. This means that E S G is not a consistent system. It does not produce a reliable result. And it cannot be the basis of our investments.
Thank, thank you, councillor.
Guys.
Thank you. Councillor, I have councillor Magna, then councillor H, and that is two four two against. Councillor Mag-.
Uh, I rise in enthusiastic support for the resolution, um, moved by councillor Wellington. This isn't a radical proposal. Organisations around the world have already embraced the environmental, social and governance. Um, philosophies in their investment, um, strategies. The evidence is clear that this is prudent, uh, and rational. Uh, risk mitigation. It aligns with our, um, values as a council. It aligns with our community's expectations. It it's not reckless. It is in fact been shown that environmental, social and governance investment. Over the long term delivers better financial returns. It's a philosophy that is followed by Blackrock. M S C I, Dow Jones Sustainability Index, the FTSE for Good. Um, and numbers of big, um, reputable investment houses that are more learned and have greater financial literacy. Than anyone in this room are following this approach. We have an opportunity with the review of our investment policy that is coming up in the early part of next year. To align our, uh, investment approach with international best practice. With our own, um, strategies, uh, with with respect to the environment. Aligned with the expectations of our community and the bonus is. To maximise the returns of our rate payers on our savings and investments. And on that basis alone. Uh, and for many more reasons, if time would allow, I'd be happy to elaborate. We should enthusiastically support this, um, resolution.
Quickly, um.
Two four two against is the mover and the second of four and two against. Otherwise, you've got four two. Thank you.
In in relation to that, well, you can't, you can't take back words. In relation to that, there was a point of order. Point of order from councillor Sid. Councillor Sid, I uphold the point of order. I will now go to. Councillor Wellington in reply. No, no, no. Procedural motion to do what?
Procedural motion.
Okay, to do what?
Procedural motion, that we defer this to another meeting. Look, we. That, and I need to explain why. We control a budget of a hundred and sixty million dollars in our. A hundred and sixty million dollars in our investment portfolio. We have a hundred and sixty million dollars in our investment portfolio. We are considering. Making a huge change to the way we invest that money. This is the most important motion. I would like to be heard in silence. This is the most important motion that we have in front of us. We are considering throwing away. I would love to hear councillor Magna elaborate more on this point. I would love to have finished my speech and we are after midnight and we're rushing a decision on something that's incredibly important and it's. Completely inappropriate. We, look, i- if we don't feel we have the capacity to discuss this and. Draw it out and have the full discussion in detail, we should call another meeting.
Okay. All right. The the advice I've received from the general manager is that it would be an amendment? Is it that you're seeking to move an amendment? Okay, thank you. Is there a second to set amendment? Seconded councillor Hamilton. Councillor Hamilton, do you wish to speak on that amendment? Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Okay, there being, this is the deferral. There being no further speakers on the amendment moved by councillor Hay. Um, we'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? And declare the amendment lost. Okay, thank you. We now move to the substantive debate, which is two four two against. Which we now need to go to councillor Wellington to close the debate.
Um. I urge everybody to vote in favour of in, um, recommending to include, um, E S G principles. In Randwick City Council's investment policy as this is entirely mainstream, conservative. Responsible and probably expected by very many members of our community. Thank you.
All right, all those in favour? All those against? Okay, okay, there's been a request for a division. All those in favour of the motion as moved by councillor Wellington? We have councillor Wellington, councillor Magna, councillor Veach, councillor Gordon, councillor Asgari, councillor. Wilson, councillor D'Souza and the mayor, all those against? Councillor Hamilton, Hay, Luxford, Rosenfeld, um, Martin, Sid and Burst. I declare the motion carried. Thank you. Okay, uh, we now move to N M ninety-three slash twenty-four. Uh, notice of motion from councillor Martin, safekeeping of sandstone artwork at one ninety-nine Coogie Bay Road, Coogie.
Yes, thank you. I wish to retract the motion and remove it from debate and we won't be voting on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, it's withdrawn. Okay, we now move to.
Okay, we now move to, I don't have to give anyone. Thank you. We now move to N M ninety four slash twenty four. Notice of motion from councillor Burst to investigate landscaping in the park adjacent to the Matchville Community Hall. Moved councillor Burst, seconded councillor Rosenfeld. Uh councillor Burst.
Um, I think it's self-explan- explanatory. Um, I'll reserve the right.
Okay, thank you councillor Rosenfeld.
Just wanna praise councillor Burst on bringing this motion to council and please support it.
Okay, confirming it says for the business paper, yes. All those, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Thank you. N M ninety five slash twenty four. Notice of motion from councillor Luxford.
Yeah, I wish to move it.
Before we do that, can I get a procedural motion to extend the meeting for another half an hour? Thank you. Moved councillor D'Souza and Burst. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Thank you. Councillor Luxford, please proceed.
So I'll be moving my motion in an amended fashion as it is up there on the um up on the screen. Okay, so basically, um, I'm calling for a a repo- a review on uh the bike tracks and bicycle paths. Uh, the results to be reported back to council at a briefing. And um if there are any concerns uh with traffic et cetera, as it is there, uh that that will come back to couns- to councillors in a briefing. So I think the motion speaks for itself and uh should be supported.
Uh, the seconder of the motion?
Yeah, I fully, fully support the amendment and um ask for all else to do so.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? There's a request for a O- o- okay, so for the benefit of the meeting, I think it is reasonable to allow councillors the time to read it. I'll give you ten seconds. No, did you, thank, thank you, thank you. I will hold up and let the council read. Okay, we'll now put it. All those, there's been a request for a division. All those in favour? All, all those in favour? Okay. All those against? Okay, uh, there's, sorry. Councillor, oh, let's do it again, sorry. There's been a request for a division. Sorry, councillor Hamilton is in favour, councillor Hay is in favour, councillor Luxford is in favour, councillor Gordon is in favour, councillor Rosenfeld, councillor Martin, councillor Wilson, councillor Sed, councillor Burst, councillor D'Souza and the mayor, all those against. We have councillor Wellington, Magna and Veach and Asgari. Thank you, I declare that carried. Okay, um, we now move to N M ninety six slash twenty four. Notice of motion from councillor Luxford investigating public toilets for Kakota Park Playground and John Calipede's Playground. Uh, moved councillor Luxford. Do I have a seconder? I see a hand from councillor Veach, councillor Veach, councillor Luxford.
Um, basically, this is just uh for council to investigate um toilet facilities. Uh, I'm not asking to investigate the five million dollar toilet blocks that we're so good at producing. I'm just asking for one of those little uh self-flushing whatever, you know, prefab little thing to be installed at both these playgrounds. Uh, John Calipede's playground is at Kensington Oval and the only toilets, public toilets accessible to parents are in the grandstand at the other side of the park, which makes it quite difficult for parents when they've got little kiddies who need to go quickly to the toilet and they have to transverse the whole oval to get there. And when they get there, those toilets are absolutely disgusting. So, um I think it's, you know, and the o- only other toilets are in the community centre, which is not accessible. Uh, Kakota Park, same deal. We don't even have a public toilet anywhere in Kensington. And um we have that beautiful playground which is really well used. So just some sort of little somewhere where parents can take their kids to go to the toilet is all that we're asking for.
Thank you. Councillor Veach is the seconder.
Um, I really strongly support this motion and actually I'd like to ask councillor Luxford if she would consider adding Will's Reserve Playground to this list because there's been requests from those parents as well. So could we add Will's Reserve?
Thank you, that's accepted by the mover.
Um, the parents ask for this all the time, you know, we really need these toilets. They don't have to be the big expensive ones. There, I'm sure there are much cheaper alternatives that we could look at and uh they would provide a much needed addition to our local playgrounds.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Hay.
Councilors, I'd like to, um, look, I'd like to remind everyone in notice of motion eighty two of twenty four last week, which I um, which we all supported, uh that we are looking at doing public toilets in uh Kensington Town Centre at fifty nine, at seventy seven uh Anzac Parade. Um, obviously, those toilets uh could be free and um they would be maintained. Th- th- those are more or less be uh given to the community uh by that development uh but if it goes ahead, as well as being the maintenance costs. So I'm all in favour of this, um perhaps more as a backup plan, just in case that doesn't come through. Um, so let's investigate other toilets. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Luxford, do you wish to close the debate?
Um, just to say that while I understand those, you know, will be in the town centre, these particular toilets uh we're looking at will be specifically at the playgrounds for the use of families who take their kids and um there's just nowhere to go and, you know, in this day and age, we can't be peeing behind the bush anymore.
Alright, thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Now, N M ninety seven slash twenty four. Notice of motion from councillor Sed. Uh, okay, thank you. Seconded councillor Burst, councillor Sed.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I've just been asked by the people who run the O S tag at Heffron Park, there's new franchisees. There's thousands or hundreds of people who play there every Monday and Wednesday. They're needing more and more uh fields to play on. Uh, the one fifty five is quite dark. It's to the, uh, it's in front of the old shed there and near the um cycle path. It's also used for soccer on the weekends and there's nowhere to train there because it hasn't got any lights. And in the long line of updating Heffron Park, um, as my moti- motions to put the Heffron Centre there, lights at the Maddo Tigers Field, improve the women's field on the grass field in the middle there of number fifty eight, um, put the shade cloth over the netball courts at Randwick Knockball. So, and and I found out, I think I've heard today that uh my other motion for the improved toilets at the netball fields is coming into motion. So I'm quite proud of making Heffron Park the outstanding uh field in in the, not just in L G O but in Sydney. Um, so this just goes a long way towards it. The world, the universe.
Thank you. Councillor Burst is the seconder.
I'd like to commend um councillor Sed on this motion. Um, I too support, um, it's important to have fields lit up. Um, my son actually plays um Ozzetake there as well and um he said, yeah, I
Sorry, thank you, please.
Could I declare that?
Oh, sorry. Okay, councillor Burst would like to make a declaration.
The my, non-perquny, non Um, that in the um, the playing on the fields when it's fairly dark, um, it's a safety issue as well. So it's important to have lights there. So, uh, it's in, you know.
But thank you, councillor Rosenfeld.
Yeah, I'd just like to praise councillor Sed, uh because as we all know, Heffron Park is a great part of Central Ward and your interest in Central Ward for a Central Ward councillor. Uh, it 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 warms my heart. So we fully support the motion and all good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, councillor D'Souza has a question.
Director of City Services, a relevant officer, how does it affect the residents? We have to think of the, is this lighting gonna be fine without any con- consequences when it comes to their enjoyment of their quality of life?
Through to the uh, through to the director of city services.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, the, any lighting um proposal that goes on um in our sporting fields will be subject to review environmental factors in which the implications to surrounding residents um will be considered.
Thank, 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 thank you. Uh, are there any further speakers? There being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour, all those against, declare that carried. Uh, we're gonna take a one-minute break before we go into confidential session. Feel free to get it ready.
Thank you.
Thank you, I reopened the open session of the Randwick Council meeting at uh twelve fifty one P M. The outcome of C P fifty two slash twenty four uh was carried. Uh the outcome of C S fifty eight slash twenty four Blenheim House refurbishment product were, uh project was carried. The, with the addition, uh sorry, C S fifty eight slash twenty four was carried in an amended fashion with the addition of a briefing, C S fifty nine slash twenty four was carried unanimously, C S sixty slash twenty four was carried unanimously, C C twenty eight slash twenty four uh was carried unanimously, C C twenty nine slash twenty four was carried. Declare the meeting closed at one, at twelve fifty something P M, thank you, fi- fifty four P M.